And so we're gonna go ahead and get started. And we are gonna start with an icebreaker. Well, first, what I, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and get started with an icebreaker, and then I'll make my big speech later. So when I was at Lane Middle School this week, it was really cool because what they're doing is the students are staying in a classroom, and their math, arts and social studies teachers, or no, maybe just math, language arts and social studies teachers are rotating to the students. And so to make it fun for the students, what they did was they named each classroom after the students' favorite places in Oregon. So they had the student boat, and so they have an Oregon Zoo room, Andrew, I thought you'd like that. They have the Y East room, and they had Oaks Park room, which I like as a Southern resident. So I thought, as we think about this, and be like the Lane Middle School students, what is your favorite place in Oregon?
Metro Convention Center. I mean.
Can we name all the metro venues?
We're just gonna say all metro venues. Scott, why is the Oregon Convention Center your favorite place in all of Oregon?
Well, that or the metro waste.
Yeah, Ailey, I thought the icebreaker was gonna be, sorry, Scott, I thought the icebreaker was gonna be, what's your favorite metro, like, facility?
Well, apparently, it is.
I was going for Waste Management. No, my favorite place, I would say Cascade Head.
And why is that?
It's incredibly beautiful hike that I've done any number of times. You're in this incredible hemlock forest, and it can be all kind of drippy in there, and then you come out into a headland overlooking the Pacific, and it's just beautiful. And if you're really lucky, you can do a day in January where it's, you know, one of those 70-degree freak days at the coast. I had one of those there once, and it was just a great day.
Michelle, we went ahead and started at nine, and we are sharing our favorite place in Oregon.
Oh.
Share.
I'll go, I'll go next.
Well, we're just popcorn. Whenever you're ready. I think Andrew's ready.
Yeah, well, no, he picks up on that. I was actually, the Oregon coast generally, but specifically Kohl's State Park. I had my first job ever at the Sea Ranch Stables there, just down at the, at the north end of Cannon Beach. And then we used to go up to Kohl's State Park all the time, and it's beautiful, and it's gorgeous, and incredible views, and I've taken out-of-state friends there all the time. And I proposed to Gretchen there back in 2002, three, 2003. So anyway, it's got a lot of that. And then Cascade Head is just north of God's Thumb. Is that right, Scott? Like that whole? I can't hear you, Scott.
Morning, everybody.
Hey, Julia. We went ahead and started at nine, and we're sharing what our favorite places to, in Oregon. And so far, we've got the metro waste facility and the convention center and the Oregon Zoo.
Nike headquarters, of course.
As I say, Andrew must have had something to do with those answers.
We watched the eclipse from that hill right at the south end of Lincoln City, which is a great spot for it. And then a couple of days later, I did that God's Thumb hike with my niece. That was amazing.
Yeah, I just did that last November for the first time, and it was amazing. Yeah.
Not for the faint of heart. I mean, it's.
No.
Good morning, Amy. We went ahead and started at 9:00 AM, and we are sharing our favorite place to visit in Oregon, or favorite place in Oregon.
I wanna hear what Scott just said that I missed. What was amazing?
Well, I started with Cascade Head, but then also the, the God's Thumb hike, which is right adjacent to it.
Great.
I did God's Thumb. My family went to the beach. God, it wasn't last November. It was two Novembers ago, and I did, I did that hike with my brother and my nieces for the first time. The God's Thumb. Gorgeous.
Slightly terrifying.
Slightly terrifying.
It was, it gets pretty windy out there, and it's like you gotta watch your step.
My place would be the Hesita Head Lighthouse in Florence area when we, and then there's a hike near there in, just near Mapleton, Oregon, called Sweet Creek. And so when we lived in Veneta, we would often drive to Sweet Creek, hike the hike. There's three waterfalls on that hike, and then drive over and hike up to the lighthouse. And that was sort of, you know, Saturday, or One Page was little and didn't have school, like a Monday, we would go and do that. And it's just, you know, that again, just so beautiful and peaceful, and I love the beautiful viewpoint. That would be my, my favorite spot in Oregon these days.
I'll go next. I had an amazing hike on, on Sunday in Rowena, and all the, all the flowers were out. But my absolute favorite place in Oregon is in Joseph. And some friends of mine started a brewery there about 27 years ago, and in Enterprise, and I just love it out there. It's got Native American history. Chief Joseph is buried there. The scenery is just amazing. The eagle, eagle cap wilderness area is amazing to backpack through, and all of the little places in that little town. But I'm generally more of a mountains person than, than the beach.
I can go.
Hey, Julia.
So I wouldn't like have like one particular place, but like the type of place is like anywhere in central Oregon, camping with my kids where there's a stream nearby would be, and just that sort of warm summer day with a crisp, cool night and a starry sky is my sort of favorite Oregon environment.
And Julia, this icebreaker came courtesy of the kids at Lane who picked their favorite Oregon places for their classroom names. That's where that came from. I, for a minute, I thought you and I were at Lane together, but no, it was Franklin we were at together, so. Two of these this week. All right, Amy or Rita, do you have a place you'd like to share?
You wanna go ahead, Rita?
No, you can go.
That's a tough one, but I guess I might have to say the Timberline Trail because for the last 19 years, I've gone around the Timberline Trail, ran the Timberline Trail with a group of eight other women in two days. And so to just get to know a place so intimately over the years and see how it changes is a really special thing. And it, you know, ranges in elevation from about 3,000 feet to about 8,500 feet, and all sorts of rivers and streams come down, and lots of flowers, and it's, I highly recommend it. You can do little day hikes there. It's 41 miles to loop, but there's lots of different places that you can pop in and access it. But you just see, we just see the whole range of terrain from high alpine to deep dark forests, and it's pretty great. It's covered in snow right now. This is a very heavy snow year, which is good for all of us.
I was gonna ask if you have to register for that, or is that just first come, first served in terms of camp?
If you're gonna camp on the trail, you need to get a campsite, but yeah, you can just access different trailheads at all different points.
Cool. Nathaniel, I, we also haven't heard from you. So Nathaniel or Rita, who would like to go next? Or you can pass. You can choose not to participate. That's okay, too.
I can go. Um, personally, I think my favorite spot in the state is really the city of Portland. Taking a bit of a different track, I mean, just the city, like, in the early night or early morning with all the lights on. It's just incredible. But if I were to pick a more, like, natural area, I suppose, like Silver Falls State Park is absolutely beautiful. I've been there a couple of times.
I guess my turn. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go rogue and say anywhere in the summer. Oregon has the best summers, summer weather I really have ever experienced anywhere.
No humidity.
No, no humidity, no bugs.
Yeah. Certainly not Washington DC.
Yeah.
Or, or any place really. On the eastern seaboard is terrible. Too bad it's only five weeks.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
What about Kara?
Yeah. Kara, would you like to participate?
Sure. Though I'm just gonna say that the Oregon coast, I, I've sat here this whole time being like, I can't decide, you know, maybe Lincoln City, Pacific City, like that, we, that's where we spend the most time because it's the most accessible of the, but the whole thing. It's all wonderful.
Terry, would, Terry, would you like to weigh in? Thanks for sharing, Terry. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for gathering this morning. Luckily, it's kind of a gray rainy day, so I know this would have been harder to do last week when we did have a little taste of that beautiful summer weather. Today, we are looking at finishing up some of the work that we set for ourselves when we did our board self-evaluation in August. And looking at some of those findings we had about what we think we need to do to be a healthier, more effective board. And we actually added on the leadership election process as we journeyed together through this year, recognizing that that's a place where our practices are maybe not what reflects our values. So I'm gonna turn this over to Michelle. We've got a draft, a seven-point draft from Scott, Juliette, and Michelle about a proposed direction for our leadership elections. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna walk through that, edit it, talk through it together, and at the end of our time, have sort of a draft that we'll then take to legal and to staff to make sure that we're not in violation of any policy or state statutes. And then we'll bring this forward for vote in May, because if we go with this, there are some things that need to happen by June 1. All right. So Michelle, would you please lead us through this portion of our agenda this morning?
Sure. So if you'll bear with me for just a moment while I pull the proposal up and try to adjust my view so I can see people. So the topic of board leadership came up, I guess, a year ago, maybe. It's been a while, and we, we've touched on it, but we this time want to bring forward a proposal that will help us become a more equitable board, that will help us address the disparity in what we see. I think I've, you've all been in the room when I've read up the statistic about the players all throughout the education system, from the Secretary of Education to the superintendents, the principals, teachers, school boards, and presidents. And the statistical pullout is that school boards, even though school boards are 80, 80% white throughout the country, but the chairs and the presidents are 96% white. So we're bringing this proposal forward in an effort to live into our racial equity values, to make the process transparent, do, do our work in front of, in the view of the public. Julia and Scott and I collaborated on this set of seven proposals, or seven, seven points in the proposal. But the goal is basically to provide a transparent path for leadership, to reduce the, some of you will say, you know, it's not happening in the back room, but to just make the process more transparent, to provide a place for diverse, or diverse board members to be in leadership and, and to develop all, all of the talent on the board. Did, did people have a chance to read through this? It's only, it's a very short proposal, but I'll just, it's kind of a process, a process piece. So in order to be considered for the leadership role, we're proposing that board members and members-elect alike notify the board chair in writing prior to the June 1st and prior to the December, I'm sorry, June 1st for the July election, or December 1st for the January election. That would be to state your intent to, to make it known to the board chair. At the first board, board meeting in either June or December, the board will publicly confirm board members who are interested in the roles. A board member must, a board member, I'm sorry, not interested, sorry, I need to adjust my view just about, just a moment. We're proposing that someone that's not interested in the leadership role serve as a facilitator for the process, to serve as a neutral third party. The board vice chair will be limited to a six-month term. Where our thinking on this was that that people that were interested in board leadership would cycle through a vice, a vice chair position. The vice chair will be limited to six-month term in order to give more people the time and the development opportunity to cycle through. Co-chairs and co-vice chairs will be allowed, and that's an effort to distribute leadership. The board elections will continue to take place at the first board meeting in July and in January. And the transition to a new board chair will happen after the board meeting in which the election happens. In other words, there will be no gavel passing in, in the middle of that first meeting in, in January and July.
Thank you, Michelle, for, first of all, just raising this issue way back when, and, and asking us all to pay a little more attention to how we do things and how we might need to do things better. I really appreciate that. And then for taking the lead on coming up with these recommendations. I think they're great. I have a couple of little comments on a few things we can go into after other people want to share their views, but generally speaking, I think this is really helpful, and I think it will improve our, our governance.
Thank you. And I, I mean, I know you gave some input, and we tried to reflect that in, in what we see here.
Thank you.
I also want to note, I, I failed to do one of the tasks that I assigned myself, and that was to talk to other board, board members of color. In previous years, we identified just the board members of color. I did not send a survey out to them, but I think we can, we can, knowing what we know today and what we've been learning about racial equity and racial outcomes, I think we know that the board members of color that have served in the past years have had less access to power. And, and, and I think that that's, I, I think that as we diversify and we start to build a board that's more representative of the kids that we're serving, it'll be important for us to address, you know, the ways in which our board culture contributes to, district culture contributes to the outcomes that we see for kids of color.
So as, as somebody who served on the working group, generally, I mean, we can have a discussion about the exact wording. I think this captures our discussion about the election, but we actually had a much longer discussion about things other than the election, which it, the scope got reduced just because apparently this, this was the, this was just to be the topic, the specific item, but that a lot of other things need to happen or should happen that will actually lead to different outcomes, because we could, we could go through this process and still have a sense that there's not a, a path. There's a process, but there's not really a built-in path. And I'd be happy to share, Michelle took a lot of notes. I added into them, but there are things about like trainings and how work gets assigned and being really deliberate, and looking at leadership. So we started with the premise that everybody who gets elected to the board sees themselves as a leader. And how do we share ways in which people have opportunities to demonstrate their leadership, even if they're, they never want to or, or serve as the chair or the vice chair? And that.
I think this process piece is our first step, and then, once we have a clear process, then I think we begin that bigger conversation about how do we look at leadership development as a whole board? And that's something that, you know, Rita and I have been trying to work on all this year with some of the trainings and, and the board self-evaluation and having share of our work as a board. And I think what you're saying is really important, but I also know we, we don't have a ton of time today. And I'd really like us to focus on this leadership election process and completing this, so we have something, so we can finish this first step towards changing the way we do leadership and the way we are.
Can I?
I, I disagree.
Finish my statement?
Yeah, I feel like it's important. I think, I appreciate the context you're bringing, because it is more than just putting a process in place. It's really understanding and defining what leadership means. Leadership in the traditional sense is white and male. And, and, and that produces, that, that leadership can produce outcomes that we see today locally and nationally. And I think the context is really important. I'd like to hear, I appreciate you filling us in on the context and our conversation that we had.
Yeah. So so what I was gonna offer is just that we, we had a much longer conversation about the, the different pieces of it and how to really create this sort of pipeline where people feel ready, they, and they view them, and they view themselves as leaders, and we talked about the, you know, the duties of the vice chair as well. Again, and like setting up a process by which we, we, we develop these other aspects of how we, not just the election, because I say, I look at the, the process and, you know, I, I think that we could say we changed the process, but there's some fundamental things that I think also need to happen in order for us to have a really different process, and not just have a process by which more people have access, but also that people feel ready and recognized as leaders. So anyway, I can, I can send around the, the notes, the, the other notes, just for people, not, not right now, and I appreciate Ailey, and that's why we kept the scope narrow, but I, I don't think just doing this is gonna get us a more diverse leadership, or people necessarily feeling bad about it. It's one piece of it, but I do think we have to do some other things as well.
I think on that point, I think the one piece here about vice chairs rotating every six months will make a really substantial difference in terms of leadership preparation and distribution of leadership. I, I do, when, when it gets down to brass tacks, I think we might wanna amend that to say like consecutive terms, because it's not, not necessarily clear that everybody's gonna wanna serve, and that you're gonna have enough people to rotate through if, if you restrict it to that. But I really like that part of this proposal, and I think that that'll, that'll make a real difference.
Yeah, and, and thanks for contributing your, your thoughts about that. I think that maybe we want to keep it flexible so that we have the conversation. And that we wanna, you know, really good leaders, in my opinion, develop really good leaders. And so I, I think, Julia, what you might be saying is you wanna, it's, it's more than just the process by which we do elections. And I, what I also don't see in here is, you know, we have traditionally had this vote on leadership election, the last agenda item. And even though our agendas are full, some, these votes have come, I tallied them over the last two years I've been on the board, have, have always been after 10:30 at night. And regardless of whether that's right or wrong, I think that we need to do the business of the public in the view of the public when they're, when we start our meetings to be more transparent. If we're doing a mid, a vote at 12:30 in the morning, it, it looks like we're trying to bury something, whether we are or not.
You know, Michelle, you and I have had this conversation, and for me, the board leadership election is an adult-centered piece of our work. And so we try to have student-centered pieces first, and so that's why board leadership has been at the end, because, you know, this, the whole idea of student-centered and, and leading with the things that actually are more about students. But I do understand what you're saying about public transparency, and so I think that's the conversation is, it's, it's currently, it's up to the board chair to set that agenda, and so given your feedback, we've moved it to the beginning. But I think that that's a continued conversation about how we wanna show up and where we place things in the agenda, that we need to continue over time.
I think it's, I think it would be okay, in my opinion, to make an exception for this particular agenda item. And I understand the child-centeredness, student-centered. But we're also elected public officials, and we, we do need to carry out our business in, in view of the public at a time that's convenient for the public.
Maybe for just that one meeting.
Yes.
Agenda to the back and, which is not really a student-focused agenda item, and just, I mean, just for one meeting. I think it's a good point, Ailey. But also, I think we.
That's what we have done. Yeah, it's what we have done, but I think we need to continue to have that conversation with whoever's chair and as a board, as we think about these things. But I do appreciate your perspective on that, Michelle.
And we have come a long way in that respect.
Andrew, I know you had raised some, some questions about number three on this list.
Yeah, thanks. And actually, let me just start by saying I, I really appreciate this work that's been done, and Michelle, I really appreciate you bringing this up. I, I think this is absolutely a fundamental reform in terms of how we do things. Sorry, my, I think my kitten just knocked a bunch of dishes off the, I'll go clean that up later. The, but I think it's really, it's, it's fundamental to how we do our business, and I think there are ways, and I think a lot of them, you know, in here are really gonna help. And I have to make one comment based on the, the conversation we just have about doing the public's business when the public can see it. I agree completely, and a hard cap at nine o'clock on every one of our meetings would go a long ways towards making sure that all of our business, whether it's the child-centered or the adult-centered parts, are done when normal people might actually expect a board to be acting and voting, but we can have that conversation later. Specifically, and so I like, I like, I like, I, I like almost everything here. I love the idea of, of, of sort of publicly declaring. And, and actually, Ailey, is it okay if I just kind of go through sort of my thoughts overall? Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick about it. I love the idea.
Because she's facilitating this part of the meeting, but I would say.
I would say yes, too. I'm really interested in hearing your thoughts.
I'll try and go through. I'll try and be quick. Um, I think like, I, I love the idea of public declaration. What I would love, but I don't think we can do, would be that, that every board member who is interested has an opportunity at one board meeting to, to publicly state their own interest and reason for being interested, and then a vote later. That, that would work in our January election. It doesn't work in July because of state statute, and, and I think that's just really unfortunate. State statute requires that we take our first, our, our organizing vote at the first meeting in July. That first meeting doesn't have to be until July 30th, so we could potentially delay. But it means there would be no meeting where new members who are interested in leadership would be on the board and be able to publicly declare. And again, I, I would love to see that changed in, in, in statute, because I think it means that, and particularly as boards throughout the state are diversifying, it means new people coming on, it's much harder for them to, to enter straight into, you know, a leadership position as a result. So I like what you've done. You've created in this process a way for new members who might have been elected in May, who are interested in leadership, to let the board, the current board chair know, and we can publicly state that. So I, I think, I think that works, that works really well. I, I still think it, it might be important for individuals to, to, to talk about why they want to, but, but that can also happen at the election, you know, meeting, being itself. And then I, on number three, the, the concern that was raised to, that I thought about is the question of whether that actually is legal under our public records laws. And I know this was not the work group's intent. Obviously, you're, the intent of this whole process is to surface things publicly, but I'd be curious whether that came up at all in your work group. What I, what I was concerned about was it sort of says, hey, we're gonna take someone who's not interested in leadership and make sure they're facilitating conversations among candidates and board members. That, to me, gets dangerously close to violating Oregon's very strict rules around, you know, or, you know, around sort of those, those communications outside, and particularly if we're being, we're sort of formalizing, we're gonna make sure these, these conversations about the leadership vote are happening, but they're not happening in a meeting. So I would, I think we need to have Liz take a look at that.
Is that what that's intended to mean? Because I. Is that what that's intended to mean? Because I read that to mean facilitation in the meeting itself. No. Oh, oh, I agree with you then, Andrew. That's facilitating offline serial conversations about.
I think that's how, when when we drafted this, I think that's how, and and this Scott was your idea. So I think this is how we meant. We did mean to have a a third disinterested party sort of uh, facilitate the conversations, but I can see where it can be, it would be problematic.
Can I?
Coming very closely to, you know.
I had a follow up conver- I had a follow up conversation with, yeah, I had a follow up conversation with Liz about this after Andrew raised some questions in writing. And and she, you know, basically said this is not a viable path, um, given the serial meeting laws. Um, and and I actually don't think it's something we need. I think that people can do this work themselves of of reaching out to one another. But Scott, since it was your idea, why don't you, why don't you share your thoughts on it?
Yeah, um, and and it's probably the wording, um, you know, my thoughts and the wording of not, are not quite in sync. The idea was just to, not to facilitate a conversation, and that's, that's the wrong word. But just to ensure if um, say we have two candidates. Is to say, hey, Amy has as uh, have both candidates reached out to you? You've had a chance to talk with them. Great. Michelle, have both candidates talked to you? Great. Just to ensure that there there has been a communication about candidacy.
Why, why I can't, I I'm curious about why the person who's interested in leadership meet, why we need that role, that it it should be on the person that's interested in leadership to to take that initiative.
Say something very similar that perhaps it's up to the people that are interested in the leadership position to take it upon themselves as professionals to communicate with them, with their colleagues on the board.
I agree. I think that is, but if we haven't, like in writing and sort of like, this is the framework we use, that you you don't need to memorialize it with a, or have a third party in there.
And effectively, the board chair, the current board chair would be, I mean, if you're declaring in writing to the board chair, wouldn't the board chair kind of in fact be that person?
The board chair might be running again, so that, I think that was why the need, Scott was thinking a neutral person.
I'm, I mean, we have heard from some board members that they felt left out. So this was a, this was the intent, and so make up your minds.
Well, if we put it on, if we put it on the candidates, though, is like, that's the expectation that you talk to everybody on the board is like, we're all adults and leaders, and if that's the ex, if that's the board's expectation, then candidates who, you know, want to be in leadership, need to do that.
So I would propose that we delete three. And just take that totally out. And I would also propose, I've, if you're on the April retreat Google Doc, I've edited. I added a sentence in italics to number one, which says, the chair will reach out to members elect in May to inform them of this process. Because I think it's important that the the members elect are made aware that they have the opportunity to inform writing by July one. And then on number four, I added, Amy said something, so I added, a vice chair may serve consecutive terms. That because if we don't have people who are interested in running, I don't want us to paint ourselves into a corner that we don't have a vice chair, or that someone serves who doesn't want to, because that's crappy, too.
So Ailey, maybe instead of um, eliminating number three, we just state an expectation. Not that there's, not that there's a facilitator, but that um, if individuals are interested in leadership, that the expectation is that they have a conversation with their with all their colleagues, because this this gets to the, and so it's it's not a mandate, there's not a third party doing it, but just the expectation that 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 happens.
Yeah.
And just to, just to clarify, I I I think that works really well. Um, I I think just we're in a public meeting right now, and I just wanna sort of state for the record, the the goal of this is for individuals to express their interest to other board members. My understanding, and Liz can obviously correct me if I'm wrong, that is perfectly allowable. Any one of us as individuals can talk publicly, we can call our fellow board members to talk about ourselves and our views. What we can't do is is call and say, hey, you know, how are you going to vote, or how is one of your colleagues gonna vote, or do you know, you know, what's happening around this? And so I just, I think we need to be really crystal clear about that. That, again, the goal is simply to share, um, you know, your own interest in in running and and why. And I and I think if we're clear about that, the the process works really well. So I I appreciate that. One, one really, can I just throw an idea out there? It just occurred to me. Would it be possible to invite, would it be possible, I'm thinking about for the July meeting in particular, for the last meeting in May, to be the meeting where um, current board members declare their interest and members elect are invited to testify if they have an interest? And would that solve this issue of 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 having sort of everything going through the chair, that that literally each member who is interested in leadership, including our our board elect, um, can can in a public meeting say, hey, I'm interested in chair, I'm interested in vice chair, here's what I hope to accomplish and here's why. It's very public, it's it's out there, everyone gets to hear it at the same time. And then we sort of know going into that that vote meeting um, in um, in July. So it actually could be, I'm sorry, it doesn't need to be May, it could be, it could be one of our meetings in June.
I like that. I like that a lot, too, Andrew.
So I just added to number two, members elect may publicly testify at this meeting if they have declared as leadership candidates. Is what I added to two to capture that, Andrew. And then to three, Julia, what I put was leadership candidates should engage with other board members to have conversations about their own interest in running and why ahead of the election.
Great. I like that, Ailey. Thank you.
Could not shall, so it gives some flexibility, but it's an expectation.
So the other thing, I think just generally, and this, this is gonna apply to all of the um, the 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 things that were, we discussed today is they should have an asterisk on them because, you know, there will be a, you know, new board in July, and it shouldn't be like, hey, this is what, this is what this board, you know, this is what the old board decided, and he here's what it is. I think we should have a, you know, not a whole total rehash of everything, but here here's, you know, here's what we, here's the course we set in April and May. And, you know, wanna get your inputs, because you know, new new board members are gonna bring new perspectives. And I think it's, and if that, those are the rules they're gonna operate under, um, that we should there, there should be a conversation that just checks in with them and see to to see if there's anything missing, any added, or a different perspective that this board hasn't considered.
And I think this will be, this will be the process that governs, because this process starts in June. This will be the process that governs the next election. But of course, you know, like with anything that's board policy or board process, the new board has the right to change that. Um, I don't know that they'll wanna jump in and change leadership elections the first thing, but we need something that's better than what we had for our next election, but it's constantly a work in process. I think, Julia, you're right.
Yeah, well, I just like the communication pro- protocols and everything. It's like, we all, we all bring up specific perspective. And I say, you just get different dynamic, every board I've been on. And it's now almost ten different boards, because just the different ones, they they all have different perspectives that people bring because of either their experience as a community member or their experience on a board or another board. So I think it's just a good check in, like.
Yeah. So is there anything else?
A quote that I just read this morning said, those that are most proximate to a problem are also the most proximate to a solution. And so when we talk about leaning into racial equity values and I mean, every staff member starts off every presentation saying, talking about racial equity. I think, Julie, what you just proposed is a good way to actually operationalize that that idea, that value. It's doing something different than we've always done before. So I like the fact that it's somewhat flexible, that we can use the talent of um, any newcomer, any new coming board members um, as input. And it and it also creates a um, a welcoming um, environment for new, for new members.
Amy, did you have something you wanted to add?
I did. So um, number five, co-chairs and co-vice chairs will be allowed. I don't support that. I support co-chairs. But I I don't think there's any practical reason to have more than two people in um, in a leadership role. It just doesn't make any sense, and especially with the provision that we're gonna rotate vice chairs, which then distributes the leadership and gives more people an opportunity. So I I would recommend removing that. It's, it's also um, a violation. I don't know if we, how much we care in this document about what our current policies are and whether or not we need to change them. You know, the call, both of those actually are a violation of our policy now, but the determination from outside counsel is yes, and there's nobody who would ever really care, you know? So it's kind of fine. But um, I just think um, you know, it just doesn't, it doesn't serve a purpose.
I I like to speak to that at this point. Because I I do think that um, we've got it, had a determination that it's it's fine um, to to do that. And having been in that model, um, both in two thousand one with Lorenzo Poe in the co-chairs role, and then in two, in twenty seventeen with Rita and Julie. I felt um, I thought it was a really good model, because we we had a heavy lift to do, we had different perspectives. You know, I've, I felt that, you know, when we were tackling a big issue, getting Rita and Julie's perspective or, you know, different people could drive things. To to me, I thought it was a way in which um, we really broaden the base, the base for leadership and.
I think that's what our board is for.
Well, I I felt like in the, in the governance of it, um, it was useful. And again, this, this is somewhat the topic that we talked about, about developing leaders is that there's nothing, there's nothing, it's only additive, so I don't, I don't see that it has any specific harm. And to me, it's additive and that it gets other people an opportunity to participate in in the leadership. And so, like I say, I I, to me, I've seen tremendous value in in having a broader leadership base than um, that what is this, you know, statutory base, just my, my point.
The other way, which is to say that it just begins to centralize more decision making away from the rest of the board. And there's just no practical purpose. I support, I think co-chairs is fine, and if, as opposed to a chair and vice chair, but um, you know, I've never seen any other board do that. I don't think there's any practical reason. I think it's, it's just silly, and especially with the rotating, rotating vice chairs, which I think is a awesome idea.
Um, I wanna speak to that also, so we, because we had, we did have discussion about this, and there are several reasons for um, it, this model doesn't make sense in a hierarchy. And and our, you know, our hierarchies are all in service of um, oh, a white, you know, this racial hierarchy. So so distributing the leadership amongst chairs and co-chairs brings I think, Julia, you said different perspective, but I work full time, and I also consider myself a leader, and really, literally from a practical standpoint, wonder how I could be the chair or even a vice chair by myself. So I really like the idea of this distributed leadership model. It doesn't make sense because we're operating in a hierarchy right now, and we, we're operating in ways that 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 are not beneficial for people of color. So to distribute modest, distribute, distribute leadership, I believe would allow, I'm just wondering, like, in the future, we might have a, another single parent that serves, that wants to be able to contribute, but is not able to take on either role full time. So it's providing an opportunity um, for people to, I mean, not I I don't know how, I I don't know how you would do this job with without this model.
I think maybe.
You're working full time and parenting, for instance.
Maybe people don't agree with me and um, you know, we we should move on, but I really think that the opposite argument could be made, which is why other boards don't do this, which is that it just concentrates leadership away from your seven duly elected board members. And you know, in terms of decision making responsibility, Michelle, and the time it takes. I mean, there is always the ability for all of that to be distributed among all the members. By policy, the responsibilities of the board chair as distinct from the rest of the members of the board are very minimal. And so there's no reason why, generally speaking, if we want to dismantle a hierarchical system, we can't in every way, every day, distribute leadership more broadly. I mean, we, some of us have served in situations where there has been an inappropriate appropriation of sort of decision making by the board chair and the lack of transparency. And it's, it's really problematic. And so, you know, I think it's good to elect leaders. I think we should elect two. I think we should find and use every single opportunity to otherwise distribute leadership responsibilities relatively equally among the other members of the board. But this concentration I think is is problematic and um, it just doesn't, doesn't add anything. To me, it just doesn't make sense. But we don't need to belabor it if other people don't agree, but I I I think it's, it's silly.
And and I also, um, I just, I take issue with like, well, we've always done it this way, or it's not really done this way. The way that things are done currently in this country and this city, um, don't work for black people.
That wasn't, my point was not that we've always done it this way. The point, my point was that when we have done it this way, it has contributed to being more problematic and creating more of a centralization of power rather than a distribution of power, which is kind of the heart of my.
Amy, I think what's good here is this says, they will be allowed. It doesn't mean we have to do it. And again, it gives us flexibility that's situational. And when we talk about, you know, if we are gonna elect co-chairs or co-vice chairs, that would have to be part of a conversation at a board meeting. So I think it 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 gives us flexibility to think about doing things differently and and working with folks who maybe want to serve in leadership, but but want to do that a little differently, but it doesn't mandate that we have to have co-chairs. So we we can have further conversations about this.
Yeah, thank you. And that, and my final point is that this isn't saying we shall, this does just offer the flexibility depending on who's in the who's serving at at the time.
So I mean, I've added, so like I said, I've added a line to number one. The chair will reach out to members elect in May to inform them of this process.
Can you, can you put it up on the screen? I don't know if you have the possibility.
I can. Kara, I don't know if Kara can, um.
I can, just give me a second.
For the visual learners among us.
Sorry. In the Google Doc, so in the Google Doc, if you're on that, as well as in the meeting, you can see it.
I'm not. I have too many tabs open, so.
I know, it's so hard. Andrew, let me know that I was lagging a little bit, and that I might be speaking over people. I apologize for that. We reset our router this morning to try to make our internet better, but it's been grumpy, so.
You're freezing a little bit, at least for me. I don't know about other people.
Yeah, for me as well.
I think it probably isn't, A- A- Ailey, I think it is important to put it up on the screen so that the public can also see that the work we're doing. So, and probably for each of these, as we go through today's retreat, we should, we should make sure we're doing that.
I don't know that I'm in the Google Doc. I have.
I'm in it. You want me to share my screen?
Yeah. I just shared it with her, so.
Uh, can everyone see that?
Great. Okay. So you can, I, the sentences I added, I italicized, and then I put in red the part that we're talking about striking. So uh, to add to number one, the chair will reach out to members elect in May to inform them of this process. On number two, add, members elect may publicly testify at this meeting, that, uh, at the June meeting, it should say. If they have publicly, if they have declared as leadership candidates, strike the language in three, and in said substitute, leadership candidate should engage with other board members to have conversations about their own interest in running and why ahead of the election. And then to add to four, a vice chair may serve consecutive terms. A board chair um, could also serve consecutive terms per our policy.
So so I'm, I'm sorry, on number four, are we replacing the, a vice chair may serve consecutive terms, replacing that with, because it seems in conflict here?
Well, they'll be limited to a six month term, but they may serve consecutive terms. That's in case nobody else wants to run. If nobody. If nobody wanted to be vice chair except the person who'd already done it, can can we allow flexibility for that person to run again?
Well, then, why don't why don't we just change the sentence to say the board vice chair, like, is encouraged to, or, so, because otherwise it looks like we're limiting it, but but you can.
But if we put if no, if no other board members, if no other candidate declares.
I guess I'm kind of getting back to that question of, I really like, I really like setting norms, but also allowing boards flexibility, because we just don't know what future situations are going to look like. And so I'm trying to think of language off the top of my head. I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of, and maybe it was Michelle who said this. How can we sort of encourage this as a norm, the leadership model? But also recognize, I mean, you know, if if the Secretary of Education runs for PPS Board and wants to be vice chair for consecutive terms, I'm probably going to support him, you know, to do that, right? Like, how do we allow that, you know, to happen if if need be?
Why don't we state our value? I think that's a good point. Why don't we state our value, Andrew? Which is, we view the vice chair as an opportunity for a broader number of individuals to be participate in leadership and encourage rotation. And in that way, we stated as like, like, why are we doing it versus just putting putting that in there? And so, like, we understand the purpose and the value in that statement, but it's still, we have the flexibility.
What if we change will to should?
Let's take, let's take out the the word limit. I think that's what's catching us. And I think I think Julia's got the right, the right line of thinking.
I like the, I like the leading with values and then stating. And I also agree the limiting, the word limited.
Not the right word for the situation.
So what if we change it to, it says, in order to give more board members an opportunity to get exposure to a leadership position, the board vice chair should serve a six month term instead of will be limited. So there's, there's a should.
Could we just say will serve a six month term?
Well.
They already do.
Okay, can I can I make, just make note of the fact that you're setting this up to be for both the chair and the vice chair to have a six month term? So you're already limiting it to one, to six months.
But the chair will, oh, because there'll be reelection.
Or there'll be an election. Whether it's a reelection or not is up to the board.
Yeah, both, both positions are already six months.
Right.
So I think just stating the aspirational around the vice chair position, the aspirational is to give to maximize the leadership exposure, if that's the, whatever word that is.
Okay, but but the other thing is, if you call out an expectation that the vice chair will rotate and and will be effectively limited to this one six month term, because you're not mentioning the chair position, the sort of implicit assumption is that the chair would be re-upped, which you may or may not want to do. I don't know. I think there's some value in having consistency, but I'm just pointing out that by calling this out, you're making a statement. Question is, what do you want that statement to be?
Yeah, and that's a really good point. Rita and we talked about that, because we, there are, there's, there's value in having a board chair serve two consecutive terms. And so we didn't, we didn't want to lose that. But we also looked at, and this is part of this sort of broader conversation I mentioned at the beginning, is that, like, all these different ways in which either whether through, you know, committee chair assignments or the vice chair, that we are building the board's capacity. And so, so we viewed the vice chair role as a place to be, you know, really building, helping build that capacity. And less so, like, hopefully, the board chair has the, you know, has, you know, many of the tools, not that their board chairs don't evolve as as they serve, but that this would also be allow somebody to get right into the leadership work. And it seemed a good way to do it was through the vice chair versus the, versus changing the current chair model.
Okay, so to, can I rephrase real quick? Because I think we can land on something. The statement would be something like, the board views the vice chair position as a leadership development opportunity and encourages rotating that role at six month every six months. And that way, does that work?
I like that, Scott. I think it gets at Julia's point of of leading with the value.
Say that again, Scott, I didn't capture all of it.
Okay, the board views the vice chair role as a leadership development position the rotation of that role every six months in order to maximize leadership development opportunities. Something like that. And so we've got encourage, but we not mandate, because there may be times where it's just like, holy, holy moly, we need to stay the course here. And at other times where it's hopefully not, hopefully more more regular times where we encourage that rotation.
Okay, I didn't quite catch all of it, but I hybrided it, cobbled it together with what you had presented as a group earlier.
Yeah, I think that's, to me, that works.
The board views the vice chair role as a leadership development position. In order to give more board members an opportunity to get exposure to a leadership position, we encourage the vice chair to rotate every six months. It is, we should write that in the passive voice. It is encouraged for the vice chair to rotate every six months.
Can I make a suggestion, sort of following up on this? I think I think you're going to have to do additional thinking about how, you know, the sorts of things that that Julia mentioned earlier. And I would add to the list of further thinking through. I, I would encourage you in the future board to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the leadership positions. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a universal consensus on what the duties are. And I think it's, I think you're probably going to want to have a conversation about that.
Rita, you could have been at our meeting, because that was exactly, we we got down into that level of detail, because that that it did provoke those sort of questions of like, what does that mean? Is the vice chair just to run the meeting when the when the chair's not there, which is what our policy says? But for all of us who've been in leadership, we know it's, it should be much more than that. You know, thought partner, co-leader, taking adding other perspectives, so.
Yeah, I think it's, anybody who wants to run for a position ought to know what the position is so that they can really understand what they're, you know, what they're opting into.
And I agree, I agree with that. I, there should be a position description, too. And but the but the part that we didn't get to is if you're applying for a job, you need to bring certain skills, right? So, I mean, we don't have that either. I mean, we could write a description, said, you know, you must have lived experience with race, for instance.
Yeah, so I think we've got a good.
I think it's a both end. I agree with you. I think that it would be important to know what we're what we're getting into.
I agree.
I like the nursery.
Pretty good process here. We've got a pretty good process here. So I think if we're okay with this, I'll take this to to Liz and to staff. And then it this should appear at a board meeting in May for us to vote on. And then we'll have this process for the next election. And then, of course, we can revisit it and update it as is our want.
Ailey?
Yeah.
Can, I mean, just as a, again, sort of building the the future pipeline, cannot be sent out to, like, I mean, could you maybe send out a note to, like, all the candidates who are running? Just so like, you know, I know people use their heads down and in the race, and then all of a sudden you're done. And like, oh, like, what's happening? It's just, just as a want to share with you, here's what the conversation is happening among the board. And if you're elected, you know, we'll want you to participate in the process. So it's not just like the day after the election. Like, here's what we've decided.
I think that's really great. It's a, it's a great welcome. And I've been thinking about, like, how we welcome people in. And this is a little bit of an aside, but how do we also welcome people out that have served? So just, we don't have to answer it right now, but we can, we can really show up in the kind ways by considering both the beginning and the end of people's tenure.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure all the board candidates are watching us right now and taking notes, so.
Okay, well, it is 10 o'clock, so we're going to jump over the communication protocols for this minute, and we'll catch those later.
Nathaniel had a comment.
Oh, so go ahead, Nathaniel.
Yeah, I've just got one comment on three. I would appreciate it if we could add language that makes it clear that leadership candidates are also expected to engage with and have conversations with the student rep, or more likely, the student rep elect, because that has traditionally not been the case at all.
One of the questions there, Nathaniel, is that the student rep doesn't vote on board leadership?
Well, I have in the past, both times. And I don't see any reason in policy why that would not be the case.
I'll just add that to have conversations about their, I'll add the student rep elect. Okay. Anything else before we move on to the ethics statements?
Can we take a five minute break?
Yes, let's take a five minute break, and we'll come back and we'll dive into ethics. Ethics statement. This, again, the ethics statement, we have introduced as part of our findings from our board self-evaluation. That this is one piece of what's recommended by the Council of Great City Schools, that boards have an ethics statement. There were some things in that initial ethics statement that was brought to us at our last retreat that we talked through and had some questions about. So Andrew and Liz and Julia talked to one another and came up with this draft for us to, again, review. And as soon as Andrew gets back, we will turn this over to him. All right, Andrew, we are set for you.
All right. Yeah, no, thank the glass situation need a little supervision, so I.
Kittens are hard.
Kittens are hard, and teenagers cleaning up glass, also not perfect. But I'm not going to criticize, they they did their best, so. But it was, it was not a, quite a complete job, so.
Was that the kitten that knocked everything over?
Well, that's what the teenagers are claiming. I believe them, it probably was the kitten, but, you know, who knows, right? There was a lot of, all I know is there was a lot of glass cleaned up and still some on the floor. So that's, that's the situation as I, as I found. All right, let me pull up. So we're moving on to the ethics, right? Hey, Cara, are you able to share, at this point, the Google Doc?
Do I have a quick question about Google Docs? Is there a way, so if I download the from Board Books, if I download the document, does it, which I've never really done, does it download into the Google Doc?
It doesn't, that's why. I don't have the quick access either. It's a PDF and.
Yeah, I had sent out an email with the link to the Google Doc, Michelle.
I was just wondering if I could get it from Board Book.
Yeah, I know. Unfortunately, I had to go back and search for the the email from from Ailey from a few days ago.
Okay, look.
Anyway, Cara, it'll be easier if you could share so I can jump around to different things as I need them.
I'm looking for it in my email right now. I'll get it up as soon as I.
Cool, well, I'll go ahead and start. So, and I actually think this might be a quick conversation, but I don't want to obviously short circuit anything if if folks want to have a longer conversation. The, this is coming out of, you may all remember, was it the fall retreat? I think that, you know, we were going through a lot of Council of Great City Schools best practices and talking about all these different issues. And one of the things that they talk about was having a, you know, having board members sign an ethics statement. To be really frank, the examples they had were pretty strange, right? And their ethics statement included some, some ethics issues, but it also included a whole bunch of of non ethics issues that are really more about board protocols, communication protocols. I mean, one of the things on their ethics statement is, you know, that you'll only, you know, you know, you won't direct staff to do work. That's not an ethics issue at all. That's a, that's a board protocol and operations issue. So we started at our last retreat, kind of had had that document. We begun to make some changes to it to try and and kind of make it a little bit, make it a little tighter and a little bit more relevant. But we didn't have time to talk about it. Julia actually rewrote a much shorter and focused and tighter sort of ethics, you know, statement overall. And that's what we went back to for this document today. And it's really just very straightforward. And then ethics and conflict of interest, you know, training and compliance statement. And and I'm hoping we're able to get it up for folks to share. Does anyone else have it up that that you could share?
I'm looking through my inbox for it right now.
I know, I've got so many emails.
There we go. Looks like Ailey's, Ailey's got it shared. So, good, this is just, I just don't know if we can talk through it. So it's just, it's, it's, it's five statements. It's essentially, you know, you know, you all know this, but, you know, your public officials under the, under the state statute, and as such, are required to disclose actual potential conflicts of interest. And then a little bit more definition of what an actual potential conflict of interest, you know, or participate in official action, which could result in a financial benefit or avoidance of detriment to the public official, relative of the public official or a business with which you are associated, or your family members are associated. Public officials, including school board members and PPS employees, need to follow the Oregon Ethics Law and observe the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's Oregon Government Ethics Law. This is all part of our training that we get every year, so it's just really a reminder. Prior to taking, prior to voting or taking action on an issue, board members must disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest. Board members will annually engage in training related to Oregon Government Ethics, public meetings laws and public record laws. And then annually, we will sign an ethics statement in conflict, ethics, sign an ethics and conflict statement attesting to participating in the training related to R S and pledging to adhere to the statutory requirements of district policy on these topics. So it is really just a restatement of what, again, we already get the training every year, but it's a restatement that, you know, we are getting the training, we attest that we've gotten it, and we attest that we will follow this public, you know, public ethics laws and and declare any conflicts of interest before a vote. So very tight, very focused. And and I think does frankly, does a better job of of getting it what the Council of Great City Schools wanted to get it, which is that it's a very intentional act. And I think it's it's pretty straightforward and not too complicated. So with that, open it up for discussion.
Just two other things to add to this is, this is very similar to what a lot of other public entity boards require, and a lot of nonprofit boards. And then the second thing is, and this is just a sort of follow on from the last meeting that Andrew and I talked about it in the interim, is that I had included senior staff, which is pretty common in the nonprofit world. And Andrew rightly pointed out that we're different and that this should be, since this is a board adopted, it's not a policy, it's a protocol, that it should apply to board members and that the superintendent is, really, it's his responsibility to ensure that senior, senior staff, well, actually, all PPS staff are quote, are quote, public officials under the ethics law, that they, that that's a separate piece, that the superintendent really should run the training and the, you know, making sure people abide by it. So that that got stripped out. So if you recall from earlier, that that was in the previous version, it's not it now.
So. I'm working on a signed statement piece down here at the bottom. You can see that on the, on the shared screen. We need, it says that number five, we will have a signed ethics and conflict of statement. So what I'm writing below is, I pledge to participate in training related to R S Chapter 244 this year, and I pledged it here to the Oregon statutory requirements and district policy. and I pledged to adhere to the Oregon statutory requirements and district policy regarding ethics and conflicts of interest.
Can I, you, you probably want to change this year. That's ambiguous. So you probably want to say something like every 12 months or within, within the last 12 months or something like that.
Annually.
So as a non-lawyer, this seems fine, but I sign so many of these each year. We should have Liz, like there's a way to memorialize it. That's the sort of the legal, fits the legal definition. And I do think that will be important because just when board members or the board or senior staff are involved in any sort of legal action, we should, often there's like, did you follow the ex-policy or, you know, the law? And I think we should align that. But that looks good for, as a non-lawyer, that looks good to me.
Right. All of this will take to Liz and to staff and have them vet, but just so we have something for them to start working with, that would be the statement we would sign in July as we start, you know, kind of re-up our year.
Why wouldn't you put instead of within 12 months, just annually? So you take the training in July, any incoming members and it's done annually?
Well, and I, anyway, I, I would suggest that people sign it after they take the training. So it would be a past tense thing rather than a future because you have to test to doing something that you haven't done yet. I mean, Liz will, Liz will deal with that.
That, yeah, the problem is I don't know when that training will be offered and we want people to say that they will follow the ethics policy when they start, that they promise to just do it when they start. But we do need to, you know, also make sure that they participate in that training.
Yeah. My suggestion would be that the board set a date and I would suggest, you know, earlier than later. So that new board members coming on don't have to wait six months to find out that they may have violated something. So I, I would suggest that the, the regular training happen in the summer. I, I think, I think it has been happening like February-ish.
Could it be part of our, of, I mean, the new board orientation? But I agree with you Rita, it should happen earlier rather than later. And it actually could be part of a work plan, for instance, July of every year.
Yeah, the reality is, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. July of the year.
I was gonna say, the moment you're a board member elect, the rules apply. So I think the earlier the better, you know, you could even do it in June. There's, there's no no reason you can't do it earlier if there, if there's time. And again, most of these, I participate in a lot of them and they, you know, there's a pretty set, the Ethics Commission puts together like their training and PPS staff can, you know, take that and then supplement it or customize it. But it should be easy to do.
Right. Are there other comments about the ethics policy?
Yeah. I admit to being a little disappointed because this essentially just restates the statute. And in earlier draft, had included some, some provisions that kind of held board members to a higher standard. Because I think Oregon's ethical standards are pretty, pretty minimalist. And, and I think there have been. Anyway, it's pretty minimalist. So I mean, it's, this strikes me as kind of a pro forma statement. That just follows the statute and yes, we should do it, but we're bound by it anyway. So it's kind of a, kind of a moot point. But if, if the board is not willing to to exceed this minimalist standard that Oregon has set, then.
I would be interested how, how, just in your, in your thinking, how would you strengthen? How would you strengthen the statement and to make it, to make it stronger? I, I, I hear what you're saying. It's a, it's a floor.
Yeah, and the, and the floor is essentially.
You don't want to aim for the floor.
Well, I mean, the, you know, the floor is easy to hit. So, you know. I mean, the, the Oregon standard is, is actually very, very high. You know, you, you have to be. There has to be essentially a demonstrable, provable financial gain in order for something to qualify as a conflict of interest. And yes, that's, that should absolutely be the case, but I think there are many other issues that are that could be conflicts of interest or could be seen as conflicts of interest that would have, that would damage the legitimacy and authority of, of the board. But would not qualify for sanction under the Oregon State Statute.
I think, so that's a, I, the one, the, the one, there's a piece of wording in there that I, that I didn't see when I was looking through this very late last night, and that was the appearance of. So not only in fact is there a conflict, but there's the appearance of a conflict.
Right.
And you know, actually Metro has a pretty strong, I think Metro's language includes appearance of. That could, that could strengthen it perhaps. And.
I s- Sorry, Michelle.
Yeah, but I also wanted to thank you, Andrew and Julia for working on this very dry but important subject.
I see Scott has his.
That's what we specialize in.
Your specialty.
So that's, that's my life. Um, I see, I see Scott has his hand up and Rita, just to, I guess I would, I would say if, if there are specific language changes, you know, that we want to talk about today to see if there's interest. And then also as a, as a statement or sort of protocol, it is something that boards can revisit every year and kind of getting back to the, to the question Julia's raised a couple of times of just, you know, we, we are a board, a board that's going to change, you know, in a few months. And so I, I think this is always going to be a living document and always something that, that a new board could add, you know, language to or make changes to a, as we go forward. But Scott, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I want to say that this may be a floor, but at least it's an explicit floor and it, and it's, it's allows, I think more explicitly that revisitation. The point I was going to bring up is because, you know, my wife is a teacher. And so before we vote on contracts, I declare my, I declare that. And then we've had legal, I'm cleared legally to vote on it because it's, it's such a dispersed benefit. I don't think it would, I wouldn't be surprised if that situation comes up again. And I think noting that specifically in our, in our, in our documents would not be a bad thing.
I, I pulled up the language in the draft statement that we used at our last retreat that we started from. And I think that the difference for me is that our values aren't in this ethic statement. It is very cut and dried. And I've pulled it up to share on our screen from what we looked at last time. But like this one starts with our primary responsibility as a board is to act in the best interest of every student in the district. The community expect and we expect ourselves to act with the highest standards of ethical conduct and consistent with Oregon law. And then the list of what we commit to. So I think we've, we have made this more of a perfunctory. And then the, there's the conflict of interest disclosure form that we would need to sign, that that's what we'll look at with Liz. But that's the piece that's missing for me is, is the value statement around why it's important for us to act ethically, that this is about the best interest of students. So that, that would be the one piece that I would have think about. And we may capture that other places, like in our communications and protocols. But that's, that's what was missing here for me.
I agree, Ailey, and I agree with what you said Rita. We've had a lot of conversations over a long period of time about, you know, some kind of accountability statements for board members about what are our collective values. But Andrew, I agree with you that like what we have here in terms of the ethics is basically what we need to be in alignment with the state statutes that are fairly limited. But I would like to see some of these more value oriented statements woven in maybe as an addendum to our communications protocols. Cause one of the issues we've talked about in the past that many boards have and that Rita, I know you've, you've had an interest in is, for example, censure, like we have no mechanism for censure of board members. And, you know, we've had instances where members of the community and, and fellow board members have, you know, publicly, you know, detailed instances of, you know, significant abuse and discrimination and racism. And, you know, there's, there's no way to make a statement that's, that, that really pegs it to say this is not in alignment with our values as an organization. So there is some value in those kinds of things, I think.
So, yeah, and I, I really appreciate the conversation. For me, and I, I completely agree both with Ailey and Amy about value statements. They don't, for me, they don't belong in an ethics statement. And maybe I'm. Yeah, and I heard you say that Amy, you agree. For me, ethics is about, again, operating, you know, under ethical guidelines. And, and again, it really is about, you know, personal gain for you or your, your family members. And, you know, not acting in the best interest of students. I, I think, you know, that, that for me is not an ethical issue so much as a, it may be a protocol that we want to put in place. And that I, I totally would agree around our communication protocols or other board protocols. If we as a board wanted to, to adopt something that we would sign, I just, I, I view that as very separate. I also think we need to be a little careful about what we put down and whether it is objective and definable, right? I mean, operating in the best interest of students, we had that conversation just a week or two ago. That, we're gonna, we're gonna disagree on that. And, and I would like to think that every single person who serves on the board is, is acting in the best interest of students, but, but it is, there are legitimate disagreements about what that can be. And I think we need to have space for that, that, you know, and, and what we don't want to set up is some situation where a, a board member, a member of the public could, could file something with the Ethics Commission because, because we took a vote on, on reopening, that they think was a violation of, of, of not acting in the best interest of students. And I, I want to be really careful as we, as we sort of keep, keep the lanes really, the lines really clear, so.
That makes sense, Andrew. And I feel like that is all captured in our protocols. So I'm, I support this and, and, you know, as it is and think, you know, we'll, we'll have Liz take a pass at it and have her kind of shore up the statement for us to sign and then, then ensure that we're signing it every July and holding those trainings maybe in June or July to make sure that we're in compliance. So, so I feel, I feel good about this, that it's a very clear communication of what those expectations are and that that more nuanced and sort of how we work together is captured in those protocols.
And maybe I would ask Rita as a parting gift, and I mean that gift, you know, literally as a gift to us. If, if you wanted to capture ways you think future boards could strengthen this, that would be a great starting point for our next conversation with the next board about, are there anything, you know, other things that we want to go above the floor as, as a board that we might want to take?
The thing is, Andrew, the value of that gift may exceed the, the limit in the ethics state.
Right.
Tangible. You can't put a value on it.
Right. Invaluable. All of, all of my proposals are invaluable, obviously. No, I, I, I had offered language during one of the earliest iterations of this. And most of, most of the things that I proposed were edited out of the document that was brought before you at the last retreat. So there, there is existing language somewhere. I would have to dig it out.
I, I actually have that in, in my folder. So I'll go back and, and take a look. Thank you, Rita.
So the other way to look, look at this is this is like a portfolio of things that sort of inform and are sort of the guardrails we work within. So I'm thinking about like the statement about all of our students. Like this is like the board's adoption of the, you know, PPS reimagined is sort of that, the defining document about what our work and what we value and what we're committing to. And then there's these other pieces that relate to specific things, whether it's communications or ethics and that they're all taken together, but they're not standalone documents. And I, I would hope that people would look to be like, what do we value or what are we committing to with more to our PPS reimagined than to a, you know, a, a statement we're signing or like a set of protocols about how we operate?
I think that's really why, yeah, to say that this is part of that portfolio of, of how the board operates. And this is one piece. Rita, go.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, even keeping this minimalist, would it make sense to add in here something about the, the fact that as members of the Board of Education, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the district?
I'm fine with that.
I mean, what do you think is missing that that would speak to?
Well, it's, because I, I mean, as I recall, when we get the ethics training, one of the things that they talk about is what fiduciary responsibility means. And there's a, and I am not qualified to opine on this, but, you know, there's a, there's a technical definition and there's a, a broader kind of, it's also kind of an umbrella term about how we are essentially agents of the district and, and we have to we have to act in ways that safeguard the, the integrity. I don't know, I can't come up with the words, but I, I'm just wondering if, if this would be the appropriate place to add that.
So I'm not opposed, but I think I might need more information because we also have obviously a duty to the, the broader electorate. And I'm, I'm, I wonder to stand like legally how those, the inter, the interplay.
Is that a question to me?
Yeah, no, I, well, you're not a, you're not a lawyer, but you can tell me what your opinion is. I mean, I just would like to probably understand from a legal standpoint, like, okay, so we're elected. So to me, that creates like a duty to sort of the broader, the broader community. And then, yes, I agree, there's, we have a fiduciary responsibility with the district. And then how, how do those interact? I guess that's, that's what I'm not clear about.
Well, me neither, which is why I'm not offering language at this point.
Okay, maybe that's to go in the future file for, for Andrew. Cause I think it's, it's a good point. I just, I'm trying to think of instances where there might be a conflict. But just to understand what, what that means. In relation to not what fiduciary responsibility to the district means, but when there could be conflicts between what may be the district's interests and the broader community's interests.
Or between an individual board member and the district's interests.
So sounds like, again, some future conversation. I'm, I'm not hearing specific language for, for today. But I think, I think it's an interesting point to put on our future agenda.
I do as well. Yeah. I think it would be really interesting to explore some of the, those nuanced questions around like where the conflict actually exists and is it addressed in this document?
Yeah. Okay. And any other thoughts on this before we move on?
For what it's worth, I made a suggestion that nobody responded to because there were other things off the mind. And I, I'd be happy to work with Liz to come up with some language on that if people thought it would be a good idea to make that explicit.
I'm sorry, Scott, what was that?
If, if you're, you have a, a board member has a spouse or family member that's an employee of the district.
I think, I think the guidance that we've gotten there is that, you know, if the decision before the board affects, you know, a large group of which that one, you know, one person is a member, then it doesn't represent a.
Correct. I'm just, I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting that, that guidance be stated explicitly in the statement.
Scott, my, my only question is, I'm just worried that there's a whole bunch of, of potential, you know, ethical issues that each individual board member is going to need to deal with. I mean, you're, you're, you're raising one. If you have a family member of the district, you know, so, you know, if, if we have family members who have contracts with the district, if we have business relationships. And so I guess I'm just a little, I mean, I, okay, fair enough. Does that, does it fall, I, 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 does this capture the fact that each one of us individually needs to be exploring those things and, and getting that advice?
Our legislative agenda also, someplace where this stuff is relevant.
Yeah. So I think this is, it's, it's a good call out, Scott. And I do think Andrew also raises a good point. So for example, I don't know, like two legislative agendas ago, I like raised the potential that there, you know, I work for a company that has, you know, legislative work as well. So I think there's individual interests and I think maybe the best way to approach that is when there are clearly times when it may be like this could, there, there could be the perception that as part of like the, the staff presentation or how things roll out, that it just gets part of the, you know, if you're part of a larger class. And the best example I have of this is serving on the Oregon State University Board. So there's a number of board members who have children who were at OSU. I mean, for example, two years ago, and then when you get to tuition setting, it's like, you know, do you have a conflict on voting on what the tuition is because you have a student attending Oregon State? And you know, the, the legal, the general counsel at Oregon State provides, you know, like every, every vote, because there's always some board members who have students, who have children who are students. And so there's this like language they use so that you're elevating it. So it's like, hey, we're not like not talking about it, but just to be clear, because people are like, oh, that person has a conflict. They voted on the tuition because their, and their student goes there. That that's a way to do it so that it's not like a specific member, but it just, hey, makes clear like there's no, but there's no specific benefit that this, that this impacts a broad class.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good.
I think again, like, like with our board leadership piece, this is a step on a long journey we have to getting to the place that we, you know, we know as a board through the Council of Great City Schools work that we would like to be. But I think, thank you, Andrew and Julia and Liz for the work on this. I think it's a great starting spot and then we can continue those conversations as we go forward. Andrew, is there anything else? Before we move on?
Nope, not for me. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Julia, in particular for, for helping with this.
All right. Anything else on this before we move on to the comms protocols? Okay, I'm gonna open the, I'm still sharing my screen, so I'm gonna open up the comms protocols. So we did a really great job at the last retreat of all of our other protocols and working through those and making changes. And then we got to the comms protocols and we kind of hit a place where we needed to take some conversations offline because they involved some confidential legal matters and some other issues and some things we needed to think through. And so we did that and we've come back with some suggested language. We didn't resolve everything though. So we're starting off the comms protocols with this italicized two options that we as a board need to look through. And it's whether we want to say board members are encouraged to communicate directly with the superintendent or board members will agree to communicate directly with the superintendent and/or members of the superintendent's leadership when board members have a substantive question or when a significant concern about PPS operations is voiced by a student, staff member, parent, other community member. So that's, that's kind of the, the first big conversation. I support the board members will agree. I think we need to, to be really direct to that. Our, our work is to talk to the superintendent and the leadership team directly, which includes our legal counsel when there's something substantive. And that encouraging people continues to allow for room for people to sort of operate in ways that undermine some of the leadership. But I know that there are valid concerns about why that feels restricting. So let's discuss, do we want to be encouraged or do we want to agree?
So maybe I can just make this a shorter discussion because I can, I can live with either one. And for those of you who I had conversations with after the last meeting and I shared what my concern was, it is primarily in the rare instances where there is something related. Misconduct, violation of policy, where you're, the, the, the appropriate course of action is not to take it to the individual that is, or an individual in the reporting relationship. I can live with either one of these because when, you know, whenever we approve it, you know, I, I, I would make a statement that just in, in, in the rare cases in which there is something that we, we have an obligation to take it outside, that I would do that. But I think, you know, day to day, and certainly under Superintendent Guerrero, there's, there's not really any issues that I see that it wouldn't fall into, you know, either encourage or agree. So if that's, if that's helpful.
And I can't, I don't think there are any issues where the, the broader definition of the superintendent's leadership team wouldn't solve the problem. Because, and, and I mean, I guess this doesn't explicitly include our board outside council, which is another one. But anyway, Ailey, I agree with you that I think this should say agree. And I think that as a, if as a group we land on encouraged, then we kind of need to go back to the table and have this conversation with the superintendent and the leadership team. Because this is not, you know, this is a mutual relationship. And so if we don't end up agreeing that we will all communicate, you know, directly through the superintendent and the leadership team, then, you know, the superintendent should be part of that conversation. And, and really then, okay, well, if that's how you guys feel, what does that look like?
So Julia would.
Yeah, I had just a very, just to, just to clarify, it's just a very narrow, specific issue, and it wasn't just general district issues. I'm, was speaking to either, and again, I want to make absolutely crystal clear, this, this is not related to our current superintendent or the current leadership team, is if there is cases of misconduct, harassment, you know, violations of policy, that that would be the only category, not the, hey, this, you know, there's this huge issue and I'm gonna, you know, as a board member instead go somewhere else to have a conversation.
So Julia, I'm trying to capture what you're saying. So it sounds like you're, we're on the same page about board members will agree to communicate directly with your superintendent. And then Amy said something about outside council being, so would it work to say board members will agree to communicate directly with the superintendent, member of the superintendent's leadership team and/or the district's outside council?
I wouldn't, I would have an issue with that.
Okay.
Um, I don't think board members should, should have an open line to outside council. Very, very, very quickly add up to a significant extended. And I, and we, there's, there's a reason why we, why we have a general counsel. And if we're talking about a rare instance of a situation where there's an allegation of misconduct, I would say that's a whole other thing that should not be referenced in this general protocol around communication. That, that deserves a, you know, a, a whole separate category.
Do you want to add a sentence, Julia, about in rare instances? Or do you agree with Rita that that will be?
No, I, I, I agree with Rita, there shouldn't, it's not like an open ticker to the outside council. And may, I'd also be, I know this is gonna subsequently go to to staff for their comments. And I would welcome, since our contract general counsel is intimately familiar with the issues that that are at play that ask her to provide some sort of guidance on that. So I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
We, could we list out the specific instances where it would be important to, I mean, could, could we be specific about those exceptions?
Why don't we ask Liz to provide that? Because I think, I think that's a good idea, Michelle. It just, it's probably way more efficient for Liz to come up with those where, where you'd have chain of commands. I mean, they're really,
Yeah.
You want to get, you want to move those things out of the pipeline? I mean, I serve on another board in which actually the general counsel, this, this is a a, a specific issue with the leader and then the general counsel providing advice and being in the chain of command creating a really significant legal issue. So I think we should get guidance, but that's a good, I, maybe a good idea to call it out and I'm comfortable with that. Like I say, I think it's, it's narrow and it's, so hopefully you don't have a, have a big discussion about it.
All right. So we, this has been circulated to us twice now, once for the last retreat and once for this one. Are there any other places where people want to talk through? That was the, that was kind of the, the place where we were stuck.
Can I make a copy edit?
Yes, please do.
Can we take out the will?
Where?
Instead of will agree, just say agree.
Yeah.
This is gonna be your legacy, Rita.
Well, you're gonna miss me when I'm gone.
Sometimes.
Remember when she took that word will out and how impactful that was?
All about, all about the Oxford commas, baby.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Ailey, before I forget, speaking of copy editing, on our last one, yeah, it's the, it's where directors elect.
Oh, that's on the election thing. Okay. Okay.
It's where they're in, I think we should say they will be invited to come to testify because it sounds like they can only do public testimony if they're talking about their board candidacy.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we don't want to hear from them.
That's right. In fact, they're banned.
Ailey, I think this, there's a piece in there about the superintendent in the case of a superintendent transition, which is a little, stands out a little bit in this document as being sort of not at the same level as the, as the other issues that we're raising. So I would suggest we either take that out or if we really want to leave it in there, then this is an instance where I think that, that should probably be funneled through the board chair because this is someone who is, you know, not yet under our employ, has another job that is, they're, you know, working to extricate themselves from. And I think that that's just, doesn't smell like good governance. So I would, I would recommend either taking that out just because it's a piece of minutia that is a little dissonant with the rest of the stuff in here, or at least making that amendment to it.
The, the reason that was added was the idea that like, if we can take things to, to the superintendent, when if there's a change, does, can we, can we start talking to the new person? And if they ask us a question, can we respond? So that was in there, just, just to answer that question as far as chain of command, that times of transition are difficult. But right, we don't want to be inundating the new superintendent until they're actually on staff. You're entirely correct, Amy.
And they have no obligation to, you know, spend a lot of time.
Right.
But of course they would want to. I just, I, I don't know. It just seems dissonant to me.
You know, it's interesting, a couple of weeks ago, I, I was in Bend and I met with the chair of the school board there. She's one of the founders of School Board Partners and she was getting ready that night to have dinner with their new superintendent. So as a courtesy, this person had never stepped foot in Bend, the new hire. Didn't know the community, didn't know the restaurants. And so it was kind of just a welcome. So I, I, that was a social occasion, not necessarily a chance to download all of the issues and challenges. But I just wonder during that transition time, it, what, what level of communication is encouraged and what isn't?
And, and that's why we tried to leave it very, very kind of like, we wanted to give the flexibility, but we also want to, uh, let's just, what if we put respecting that the new superintendent is not yet.
Yeah, actually, Ailey, can I, can I jump in before we do too much more editing? I think it's a little bit, so we have a, we have a right to communicate with anybody we want.
Right.
Right? And so that's, I mean, you know, I don't think we need to restate that as just individual, you know, people. I think what we're getting at though, is this question of if you're communicating about official board or official district issues, do we need to have some protocols around that? And I think we really do. And I kind of like the idea of, of going through the board chair. So I'm wondering if this, it says, you know, in the case of a superintendent transition, you know, any communication about district issues should go through the, the, the board chair prior to the superintendent taking the position. I, I just think we need to be really clear, as someone else said, they're not our employee. It would get very confusing for a new superintendent to be hearing from multiple board members. Are they, are they telling me things that a majority of the board believes or just they believe? And frankly, we still have a superintendent. Up until that date, the superintendent in place is running the school district, is our employee. And you know, I, I understand there's some his, history here and other, other concerns which are, which are really valid. But it feels to me like we need to keep managing the district through the superintendent until we have a new superintendent. And if there are specific things that need to be communicated to the new superintendent, I think they should go through the board chair.
Actually, I would suggest taking this whole thing out. I mean, I think it's, and I mean, they're like, again, we shouldn't let, we shouldn't legislate because of specific things that happened in history. And, and I acknowledge like, like I have a really good example of like when that needed to happen. But I also think it's a, like, just that if you have an incoming superintendent, you want to ask them like what they want because most of them are eager to establish working relationships with all the board members because board, board chairs change. So I think that's, it's, it's better to like, you know, put a pin in it for when we actually do that and to seek the input from whoever that new person would be, you know, in the future, hopefully not, not in the near future.
I think we, the last time I talked to Batalupe, I told them we're planning on 10 more years. So.
Hey, Ailey, if, or whomever is keeping a running list of things that it would be good for us to revisit in future governance retreats, I think it would be worth our discussing processes for onboarding a new superintendent. Not that we anticipate doing that anytime soon. I'm down with your 10 years, Ailey. Sounds good to me. But also for board members, because for example, you know, there are a lot of best practices around onboarding new superintendents and introductions to the community. And we just didn't do that at all last time with our superintendent. And I think it was a real failure on our part as a board. So I think even though, you know, it seems hypothetical, I think it might be worth as a board, spending some time, putting some guidelines around that and also talking about. And also talking about, um, you know, onboarding of new board members because the staff does their part in terms of trying to introduce people to, you know, the structure of the organization and substantive issues. But as a board, we don't really do much with new collectively with new colleagues and to support them. So, um, I think, I think those would both be good things to talk about.
I completely agree. I completely agree with that. Um, I just gave a training, a national training about diversifying boards. And, uh, one of the best practices I shared was to create a really strong onboarding. And that's when, um, you can't assume that everyone's on the same page in, in terms of what they understand about an organization and some of the cultural, you know, things that happen. And, um, I also agree, we should probably get an onboarding for the superintendent before we need it. So we're not, you know, jamming something together really quickly, reacting. We're actually prepared and we can develop a, a strong, a manual over time.
We will have a chance to, um, affirm our support of our current superintendent as we look at contract extension with him and, uh, um, a retainment offer. So just to put that away, file that, uh, as you think about, um, how we continue to, um, talk about the superintendent we have now, as well as think about the future. Cause we know that, um, uh, many people would love to have the sort of visionary leadership that Guadalupe has brought to Portland in their districts. Um, anything else on this communications protocol? Any other, um, copy editing or I've deleted the thing about the new superintendent? I think you're right, Julia, that that's a case by case basis as we, um, when we get to that stage, we can have those conversations. Anything else in this document that you would like to lift up or edit? Anybody?
Yeah. Ailey, can I ask a question? On the, um, under the request for information or decision making, two, two quick things. Is there a difference between E and F? Here, the E says that staff and superintendent will have the board book and supporting documentation available four days before the board meeting, except with certain circumstances, which I'm fine with. And then in order for board members to be adequately prepared, the board office will provide materials. They're the same, right?
I, I thought the same thing. I thought that they were basically the same, saying that we would have materials in board book four days prior to the meeting. And they actually said Thursday is the day.
Well, and I think, um, the board book, the E addresses all meetings, right? It gives us that, you know, like I know the, um, policy meeting that's on Monday. We were trying to get stuff out Friday, so it was four days. So can we delete the the and just make it board meetings and then delete F?
Yeah.
Sorry, Amy?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Oh, I couldn't tell if you were saying yeah or no.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, another thing related in the same section, I don't, unless I missed it, I, I looked through a couple of times. I don't think there's anything in here about how in requests to questions from board members, information is provided to the entire board. That's been a practice, I know we put in place that, you know, if a board member asks a question, the response goes back to the entire board. But I don't think, unless I missed it, I don't think that's in here. So the question I would put to my colleagues is, do we, do we want it to be? I like that practice. And it gets a little tricky defining because I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's necessarily to every small thing. But I, it's for me, if there's some way to define, you know, oh, I've asked for, you know, for factual information, um, you know, that, that it's just, it's nice for all, uh, board members to, to receive that back. So we all have the same information. And then the other thing that was missing here, and it's a little bit, this is tricky because we're writing our board protocols and this is a little bit more of the superintendent's, um, place. But is there, is there a, um, uh, sort of a limit here in terms of, of response? And, and we, we do get to it with this sentence of, um, yeah, staff, staff will respond to board members' requests and provide options for information fulfillment if the request is time consuming. So that begins to get there. And, you know, for me, it is more a question for Guadalupe. But is there a point where the superintendent says, you know what? That question is so involved that I need, I need direction from a majority of the board before I direct staff to go down that road. And I will just, you know, we've had this conversation before. I will say that is common practice in, in other governments. It's definitely common practice at Metro that, you know, relatively easy information requests, of course, will respond to any member. But when you start talking about something that's going to take two, three, four hours of staff time, that is often where the COO will go back and say, I'm happy to direct staff to spend this time, but I need to make sure that the majority of the board wants the staff to be spending their time doing this work. Because otherwise you get into a situation where, you know, all seven of us could be directing, you know, literally tens or even dozens of hours of, of, of staff time. And, and I think that gets very untenable very quickly, particularly for going in different directions.
That has happened. I mean, this is where that has happened. So it's, it's not a theoretical issue.
I just did some copy editing on the fly, Andrew, there. Um, I realized that it's B is actually the heading of this section, providing documents, and that those six points all relate to documentation. So we needed to lose the letters because we switched from letters from numbers to letters oddly in our document. Um, and then I moved what was the last section of that about questions during board meetings? Cause that's not related to documents, that's related to information requests. But I do think we need to add a two here saying, um, when a board member asks a question, um, we encourage staff to respond to the entire board. For clarity, I mean, how do we want to word that?
I think that's, that's fine because, you know, all we can do is encourage because we can't direct them. But, but Andrew, I agree that it's an important omission here, that it wasn't recognized before.
Yeah.
And, um, also agree that in some way we need to, um, address, uh, sort of the prioritization of time consuming requests.
Yeah, maybe, maybe in the paragraph right before, and again, I'm just thinking on the fly. I, I like the sentence that says, staff will respond to board members' requests and provide options for information fulfillment if the request is time consuming. You know, the, for, you know, uh, the superintendent may ask the chair, um, you know, I, again, it's on the fly, you know, um.
Is this the will of the board?
Yeah, may, may, may ask the chair for, you know, for additional information for, you know, for, 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 for very time consuming requests. There's better language than what I just came up with.
I would say that's, um, that's okay. And I'd be interested in Guadalupe's thoughts about that. I mean, I think ones that are related to things we're going to vote on, um, you know, that if board members have questions, they should get answered before we vote on them because we're, we're being asked as individuals to take, um, you know, action or vote on something. And we should have what we need to be able to, to vote on something. But for things that are like, hey, I'm curious about, you know, how many transfers into, you know, just because I'm curious, because somebody asked me in the community, like how many transfers into Grant and Franklin are, you know, X? And then asking staff to do some like deep analysis that's not based on anything before us. I think that, I, I, I think the language that's being typed is I'm supportive of. I just think it's, it's a different if it's something that, hey, we're asking you to approve something.
Yeah. Julia, on that, Julie, just really quickly, do you see any limit though? On that? I mean, I, I hear what you're saying and I generally agree, but it still feels to me like there has to be an outer limit. I, I, and again, I, I just, I, go ahead.
And here's, um, Andrew, what I would say to that is, I think sometimes like, um, so for example, if I ask a question and staff comes back, it's like, hey, that's a huge question. It's like, oh, I really actually was just looking for X. I mean, I think there's, there should be dialogue with the, the board members, like, hey, this, this is going to, you know, there's no way for us to compile that information. Or we're going to have to do, you know, X, Y and Z. Um, and these are mainly for things that haven't maybe come through a committee process. Cause I do think when things go through their committee process, it's, you know, pretty much, most of the questions have been asked and answered. And it's more when things that haven't gone through that. And I, I do think like the professional, just having a professional conversation with a board member of, if it's something for the board meeting is like, we can't possibly provide that information to you and here's why. Or like, here's the status of that. Like I had a question the other day, you know, yesterday to Guadalupe of like, you know, where I'm seeing a lot of media reports about, um, COVID cases and, you know, can, you know, what's, what's going on with the dashboard? Not like, give me the dashboard, just like, give me an update on the dashboard. And he actually sent me something from the link to OHA and that like totally answered my question. And like, hey, I don't, I don't need the thing I asked for. And really it took just a couple of minutes for that interaction, which could have been perceived as you're asking us to do X, Y and Z. And I really wasn't, I was just trying to figure out. And so, so I would, I think we should encourage that if there is something that might be a big time consuming request that's not related to our board vote, that, that that be a conversation with, like first with the board member because they made an intended. And then second, they may be able to narrow the scope. And then second, that it, I think going to, and I can't see the language because you guys' pictures are covering up my, um, the document. But the second of being able to like have a mechanism to go back and whether that's, you know, the, the full board.
Going to. I want to just make a note about when we say, is it the will of the board? Because the board isn't just a blob. Um, and if we have a diverse board, and that means diverse perspectives, lived, lived experience, you know, professional backgrounds, um, we might, there might not be a will of the board. So majority, I think, is that you, Ailey, adding in the word majority? I think that's a good clarification. To assume that we are all bringing those different perspectives and lived experiences, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I am proposing that we delete the line, staff are encouraged because it is not our role to direct staff. So I think we switch, we delete that and say the superintendent is encouraged to discuss time consuming requests with the requesting board member or the board chair.
I mean, and staff can say, you know, not now. I mean, I feel like, um, I know there's a power differential. Um, I think, Julia, you mentioned that, yeah, they should be able to say, you know, if, if it's something that can be done quickly, um, if it's related to something we'll be voting on is an important point to bring out.
But I also think if it's something we're voting on, doesn't mean, just because we're voting on it, doesn't mean that we can ask staff to do hours and hours of work. I think there's a, there's a line thereof. Just because we may want information, doesn't mean it's reasonable to get it, even when we're voting, even when we're making a decision. So I think we need to have that, that boundary that the superintendent can discuss with the requesting board member or the board chair to say, you've requested this information regarding this vote, and this is not something we're able to provide you. I think that that's an acceptable boundary. Board member couldn't say on the day they didn't get what they wanted.
There's a judgment about relevance. And I think the question is who's making that judgment? I don't know if you guys read that article that I sent through from San Francisco, but it was kind of, there, there are many layers of issues going on there. But that was one of the clauses from the superintendent in order for him to stay for another year was like these tangential requests that are swamping my staff from the board and keeping them from doing the work of figuring out how to get our kids back in school, um, won't be tolerated. So there's a question about relevance. If there's information that's truly relevant for us to do our work and make important votes. I think that's what we're getting at.
So.
And I would say truly relevant, um, given the, the level of information necessary for a board member to, to do due diligence.
So one thing I would, I would change this is instead of the superintendent is encouraged, is may. So again, we're not instructing the superintendent to do something, um, but that's may. And I believe that the best place, place to start is with the board member who's asked it because I think you're going to actually spend way more time if there's like a go around. I mean, we're all, you know, elected the same. And, you know, I, I, I say, I had a perfect example yesterday where I wasn't wanting a huge project to be done. I was just like a quick update. And what Guadalupe gave me was, you know, it took him a few minutes to answer and it, it totally addressed the issue that I had. And I, I think it, it's better, it's way better to do it that way and try to narrow. And if you can't get it narrowed, yep, then go to the board chair and go through this process, but.
I think that, does that sentence that I've added work for you, Julia? That it says the, the board chair, the board member is listed first? It says the superintendent may discuss time consuming requests with the requesting board member or the board chair.
By just listening at first, it doesn't actually mean that it's the first, first in order. Or to like, understand the request. I say, most of the time I think of things, it's kind of like, I look at how like Ryan Vander, Vander, when he, you know, responds to somebody who has a public records request that, you know, like that's going to result in like 2 million responses. Like I, I'm sure that's not what you wanted. You're looking for something specific. And I think he does a really good job of getting like, okay, let's make this a, you know, get you what you want and it not be like an onerous time or financial.
Okay. So the superintendent may discuss time consuming requests with the requesting board member to understand the request and then discuss the board chair to determine if the request and resulting resource expenditure is the will of the majority of the board. Anything else in this document we want to revisit or?
Yes.
Look at?
Yes. Okay. Can you go back up to that paragraph?
Yep.
So the first sentence, um, you know, feel free to communicate requests to any member of the leadership team, the board office manager and use best professional judgment, which by the way, has no E unless you're in the UK, on who else to copy on communications. Um, I, I think we might want to throw in something there about respecting the administrative chain of command.
Okay. That might also be where we put in to Andrew's point about copying the whole board on substantive responses, since it's no place else.
I added that in number two on this. Amy, staff are encouraged to respond to the entire board when replying to board questions or for information.
So I've had my hand up for a while. That's, uh, I think, I think that was Amy's point. Is that, uh, board members should be encouraged to, if we get a substantive response. Again, there's, there, there's judgment about, you know, how big an issue. But that we share, you know, information uh, that we get back if, you know, occasionally staff will space out, CCing everybody.
And I, I think the spirit of what's happened over the last month has been a good example of board, recognizing like that staff is, um, primarily focused on reopening and that's the most important thing right now. And, you know, just in that spirit, it's like, um, full commute, like a lot of communication between senior staff and the superintendent and the board, I think is, is a positive thing. So, um, I, I don't think any board members have bad intents. And it's the, so again, I guess maybe elevating like this communication is so, is so key, um, because sometimes it's like, hey, I didn't know that landed on your desk on the day that, you know, X, Y, Z is happening. And, and often it's like, hey, okay, that, that's, that's fine. I, you know, this isn't like, by the way, it's not a, it's not a big hurry. Or I'm just raising it for you because there's this other time element that maybe you didn't know about. You know, so again, communication, I think is key.
I'm going to put the board part of that first, um, on, on two, just to again, say that it's our responsibility and that we're encouraging staff to do this, but primarily this is the board responsibility to share information. All right. Anything else? Uh, anybody has on this document for edits or copying, copy edits or suggestions? We are going to take this to staff to review before we vote on it as a board.
Good.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I can't read that fast.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just scrolling for me to see like what I, I'm like, I'm making notes of like, oh, that's out of alignment. I need to fix that. So there will be some scribners, like three, like two and three right here both have, there's two twos and there's an extra dot on three. That's all the kind of stuff I'll fix. So.
Ailey, one, or actually I see Scott's hand is up. Did you, is that intentional, Scott? He's, anyway, I'll, I'll just, one quick thing. Scott, did you have a question?
Uh, no, that was the old guy leaving his blinker on.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I have you back.
And that was my hump.
When I'm sharing my screen, I can't, I can only see four people, so sorry about that.
Hey, Ailey, just really quick, uh, the, one of the things at the very end about contracts, and it just notes that, um. The actual contract will be available electronically and I just lost the thread. Are we, are we okay with that or staff already doing that? I, I know there was, there is the sort of security issue around that. Um, I just want to make sure that that's something that, that staff are okay with. I, I think it's great as long as we've, we've resolved that issue, I think it's.
We did talk about that and that was the resolution, right, Julia? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think if there's nothing else on the comms protocols that.
Actually, I'm sorry, Ailey.
Go ahead.
Andrew, um, the, the contracts are available just to board members. But the, but the, but the staff memo is external facing.
Great.
Glad they're right, Ailey. Which I think addresses Andrew, your issue about the sort of keeping our, the specific contracts details secure. To avoid fraudulent activities. Um, I think it's in line with the audit we had, but that the sort of, um, any board memos on the contracts are. External facing.
Great, thank you for clarification.
And don't we have to request those contracts, Julia?
No, they're, they're just uploaded.
Okay.
Anyway, I mean, if people, if, it's like, if you go to print out the board book, if you actually print out the board book, it's, you know, something like 500 pages. Usually, um, it, because you get all the contracts in there as well.
Yeah.
I don't do that for, just for the record.
I was going to say that like completely negates any sustainability goals around saving paper.
Yeah. All right, any further questions on this?
Quick, do not print. Oh, my God, I learned my lesson.
All right, anything else before we move on to our break?
Yeah, Kara will attest that like I have like struggled with this but gotten much better.
I know you like to have your things printed out to make notes on. I totally understand that, so.
But not all the contract, hundred page contracts.
No, that's not sustainable. All right, well, thank you all for your great work on that. Um, we had scheduled a half hour break, but we've gone 17 minutes into that time. So would you all like to come back at 11:30 or would you like to come back at 11:45? What are your druthers?
11:30.
11:30.
Yep.
I was going to say 11:45, but 11:30, a little begrudgingly.
Okay, well, I will see you guys. Let's do, let's give ourselves a full 15 minutes, so that will be 11:33.
Well, actually, I, okay, I think only three of us, like, um. So it, it may just be that Amy and I spoke up first, so I don't want to.
I'm 11:33 as well.
Me too.
Who else is going to do a 17 minute workout with me?
You can do some good squats and planks in that time.
Yeah.
Probably.
All right, Miss, let's give, let's do, let's compromise, let's do 20 minutes, so we'll be back at 11:38. Okay, bye, everyone. Um, lead us in an initial conversation about guardrails. Um, we don't expect to have guardrails by the end of this conversation. This is just, um, some learnings about, uh, guardrails from Council of Great City Schools training that Rita has done in her coaching work. Um, to kind of help us further this conversation we've been having all year about this piece, um, kind of secondary piece to our goal setting. Rita?
Hey Rita, before we get started, just so that I can pull up whatever is going to be the basis of conversation, is it the last thing you said? Or are there multiple emails that?
Well, there, there are multiple emails because, um, I, one of the attachments, the, I messed up the pages. I printed it out and somehow the pages got all messed up. So I would look at the, the last, the one that, where the subject line is corrected materials.
And that has everything.
That has everything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so, um. And, and I've pulled them up so theoretically I could share my screen if I can. Um. But I just wanted to preface all of this by saying that, um. This is all new material to me. So, um. I, I generally prefer to talk about things that I have a, you know, really deep understanding of before I go public. Uh, that is not the case here. So, um, I'm going to have to ask for a little grace. Um, it's, um. So I've been doing this governance coach training.
Director Moore. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just looking at the live stream and see that it still says we're in a break. Terry, has that been changed over? Just want to make sure we don't proceed without that. Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. And Carrie, I just combined your names, Kara and Terry to, uh, for keeping us legal in our, uh, public facing work. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, uh, this, this training has been eye-opening in many ways. Um. And in particular, the discussion around guardrails. Um. If you, if you remember looking at the student outcomes focused governance manual. Um, that's what we have been referring to, especially around the superintendent's evaluation. Um, and, and our self-evaluation. Um, that manual doesn't go into great detail about the different components. Um, and it's especially, I think. Um. A little, a little confusing about what the guardrails are. So, um. A couple of months ago, I had a training on guardrails, which was revelatory for me. Um, so, um, and it coincided with, with the last board retreat, which is why I wasn't present. Um, so, so I'm going to be presenting my best understanding at this stage about, uh, what the guardrails are. And how they fit in the, in the Council of Great City Schools governance model. Um, so I'm going to start off talking about. Kind of the, the model first and then go into a little more detail about guardrails, as I understand. Um, and this was, um, you, you can refer. Um. Most of this is gonna, is reflected in the email that I sent last night in the text of the email. So you can refer to it at a later date if you haven't looked at it yet. Um, so, so overall, like big picture. Um, the, the council governance model. Um, is grounded in four foundational documents that, um, that they think every district ought to have. And the four documents are vision, goals. Guardrails and a strategic plan. Um, and, and to some degree, ideally, um, the, the four documents should happen kind of, um, in sequence. Because there's a, a sort of cascading. Um. Element of, of getting more and more detailed. About, um, the operationalization of the vision. So the first thing is. Um, the assumption is that every district should have an educational vision. Like, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? What's going to be the student outcomes? Um, so it's, um, an aspirational, a, a picture of an aspirational desired end state. Um, it's developed by the board superintendent, um, with, with a great deal of collaboration with the larger community. And it articulates a common understanding of the outcomes we want for students. Um, meaning what do they know and are able to do? And that once you codify this vision. Um, everything that the district and all of its component parts subsequently do. Should be designed to advance progress toward, toward that vision. Okay? Um. And thankfully, we now have a vision, um, which is very aspirational. It's very, um. Uh. You know, it's a, uh, it's a sort of best possible world, I think. Um, and based on the vision, um, we have adopted goals. So the goals are developed by the board. Um. And they're supposed to be informed by an assessment of the current state of affairs versus the desired states. Embodied in the vision, right? Um, and the goals are, um, an attempt by the board. To identify the highest priority outcomes. That we want the superintendent to focus, um, district system improvement efforts on. Right? Um. The goals are supposed to be, um. Developed in collaboration with the superintendent and his team, informed by, um. Uh, you know, data and, and analysis of where we are. Um. Relative to the vision, what are the barriers that are standing in the way of achieving the vision? And, um, and what are the, what do, what does the board think are the highest priority? Um. Areas of focus. In the relatively short term. So it's like one to three years. Um, and then other goals, you're supposed to have, um. Interim goals with metrics attached. So, so, you know, all of this is supposed to be based on data. Um, data can be both quantitative and qualitative. Um, so, you know, we went through this exercise. It was a pretty, pretty extensive exercise that we went through over the last couple of years. To determine the goals and then associated metrics. Um, and the metrics, the, the overall metrics that, you know, there's, the, the goals are supposed to be smart goals. So it's, um. What is smart, a specific measurable achievable result oriented and time limited. Um, and there, and the board is supposed to be, uh, progress monitoring for all the goals. Okay. After the goals come guardrails. Um, so, so the goals are kind of, um. Putting into action. Um, pieces of the vision, right? The guardrails are expressions of values. Um, and the values are informed by the principles that are embodied in the, in the vision. So the board identifies a set of values that should underpin district improvement efforts. Um. O-often. Um. If, if you look at the CGCS materials, they talk about, um, guardrails being couched in negative terms. So prohibitions are constraints, um, parameters with, when, within which the, the superintendent has to act. Okay? But they can also be framed as positive values. Um, principles that should guide the superintendent's improvement efforts. Um. Again, the guardrails are supposed to be, um, a, a kind of collaborative conversation with the superintendent. Um, and I, I think based on previous discussions, especially at the, at the last board retreat. Um, I think this board has expressed a preference to, to have guardrails that are positive rather than negative. Um, and, and I actually endorse that. Um, because I, I think it's a, I think it's a more productive way. Um, for the board to interact with the superintendent and, and it's, and it gives a. Um. I don't know, I think it's much more accessible to the public if we frame it as a positive as well. Okay, so the, the fourth major sort of foundational document is the strategic plan. Right? It's a medium horizon roadmap for system, system improvement. That's developed by the superintendent and identifies the improvement strategies. That are going to be used to address the barriers, right? Including the timing and sequencing of their implementation. And the strategies are intended to be appropriate to overcome the identified roadblocks. Um, to achieving the vision. Okay? So, um. The, the idea is that these four documents. Um, together. Set the direction of the district. And they work in tandem. Which means that they need to be fully aligned. Um, and they need to be doable. So, um, you don't want to have, um, you know, a whole bunch of goals with, with specific measurements. Specific product, progress measures. Plus a whole bunch of guardrails with, again, um, a whole bunch of metrics attached. Um. So, so you want to have a limited number. Of, of kind of target focus areas. Um, so that the district efforts can be, you know, can be really coordinated and focused. And, and you're not just going off in a million different directions. Um, and they all need to be aligned. So whatever we have in the goals and the guardrails. Um, should, should be aligned with the strategic plan. Okay. I think that's relatively straightforward, but is any of it unclear at this point? Because the next thing I want to talk about is guardrails specifically.
I think you did a really good job laying that out, Rita.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say the same. I, I thought that when I looked through this last night the first time. Um, and again, this morning, I thought it was really, um. It's linear in, in a way that's makes it really easy to, um, digest.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Before we get any, um, before we start narrowing in anymore, I want to ask a question of you. So first of all, I feel really proud and grateful that we have three out of four of these pieces in place. Or with this strategic plan soon to be in place. But in your opinion, before we dive deeper. What are we missing by not currently having guardrails in place?
Um. That's a good question. And, and I have to say, that's one of the things I've been sort of struggling with. Like what exactly is the purpose of the guardrails? Um, and. And again, you know, I, this, this is, this is new to me still. So I'm sort of early in my thinking about this. Um, but I think what the guardrails can do, if you think of guardrails as, as, um. Uh, uh, values, value statements. Um, it's a way for the board to call out. Um, specific values that the board thinks are, um. So. Um. So important, they, they are so foundational. That, um. They should be, that, you, you know, the board is sort of proclaiming these not only to the superintendent, but to the community as well. So these are kind of, uh, when, when we get to the Philadelphia guardrails. Um. They call them, um, non-negotiable conditions. Um. And, and the idea, you know, some of this is, is grounded in the idea. From the, the literature on school board governance. Um. Which is interesting in a lot of ways. Um. So the, you know, probably the essential function of the school board is to create conditions. That will allow students to achieve their fullest potential. Right, so setting the conditions. Um, by picking out of a discrete number, relatively small number of critical values. It's announcing to the world that, um. No matter what else happens. These are the conditions we want to be present in every school. Because we think these are essential for the wellbeing and the, um. Uh, sort of educational advancement of our students. Um. So I think what we're missing by not having these value statements. Um. I think what we're missing is a. I think what we're missing is a distillation of. A lot of the values that are embodied in the vision. But. The, I mean, the vision, the vision document is, is big. You know, it's kind of hard to wrap your head around it. It's uh. Most people are not going to read it. And even if they do, there's so much in there, it's so forward thinking and so comprehensive. That. A lot of people can get many different messages from that. I mean, I think there are a few essential messages that come through, but. Um, by having guardrails. It will allow the board. To call out. Three or four kind of essential values. That no matter what happens, the board wants, is, is requiring that. The district activities embody those values. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, the only thing I would say is um. Just for us to pay attention to redundancy. Like if, 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 if those, if that absence is really to our detriment. Then I think this exercise is important and we should call it out. But like you, I have a little bit of a hard time wrapping my head around this exercise. I do, I'm not, I'm, I'm not. A hundred percent convinced about. What's missing? And why if we, you know, strive to come up with these things, it's going to. Enable us, better enable us to create the conditions that our kids need.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not saying that I disagree, I'm just saying that I, I don't, I don't see that yet. And I've kind of always felt this way about this exercise.
Yes.
Maybe one way to think about it, I guess um. I think it's, it's hard to articulate, but like we're, we're elevating some things to like. These are. You know, as you operate and you have wide latitude to operate, as long as you're, you know, you. You've, you know, focusing towards the goals and knowing that that's what we're going to measure against, so these are, these are things that are elevated. Values, like not all values are the same, I mean, one thing could be like. For major decisions or programmatic, there must be some sort of, you know, be informed by student voice. Just as, as illustration, could be like, we're just elevating three or four things to. As you go about your operational work. That we value as a board and as a, you know, leadership of the district. I don't know, that's maybe one way to think about it, so it may be redundant, but it's an elevation perhaps.
So when I'm hearing you talk, Rita, I'm sorry, um, Ailey, did you, you had your hand up?
And Andrew did as well.
Yeah, but Michelle, Michelle had taken off mute a couple of minutes ago, so go ahead, Michelle.
I was just, um, as you're um kind of giving us this um intro, Rita, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm recognizing the importance of actually. Putting these guardrails in place as a way to operationalize equity work, you know, I'm here because of the. The achievement gap, frankly. That's something that's important enough for me to volunteer for and to pay attention to, and. We uh. Historically haven't done a great job there, and, and I just feel like putting the guardrails in place gets us. That much closer to one articulating our values. And giving us the uh agency to, to act on those values and. And so I, I'm, I'm really happy and grateful for the exercise today. Um, even as I don't know, I, you know, as I was reading through and seeing how things were feathering in together. Wondering how we would apply guardrails to our vision. And, and, and I believe somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we currently in strategic planning? But it has not been completed yet, so. Anyway, I, I'm feeling hopeful that this gives us a tool, it's a tool that's. Very, very important to me.
So this, um, the strategic plan, um, I got an update this week and um it appears that we're going to be getting. A, it's still a draft, but it's, it's progressing toward a final version. Um, and I gather we're going to get that. Probably within the month. So mid-May-ish. Anyway. So.
I was just going to give the example, like as we. Got some of these values embedded in our goals a little bit, but because we're still forming like our. Um readiness for high school and readiness for post-secondary life goals. You know, we would not want to sacrifice arts, right? We know we have a lot of broken arts pathways and that we've been working to resume those arts pathways. And we actually recognize the value of arts in closing the achievement gap. So, one of our guardrails could be that, you know. Arts education would not be sacrificed, or, you know, social emotional wellness in pursuit of academic, right? Those are already values that the district has established that are in our vision, they're already mentioned in our goals. But the guardrails would, would really dig into those values that. We are not just about creating academic success, although, although that is very, very important, we also recognize. The wellness of the whole child and that we need to be looking at CTE opportunities and. Arts opportunities a- and have that be sort of one of the guardrails, because, you know, we, we had a system before that. Had sort of allowed in some ways arts and CTE and other programs to slip. And, and we don't want to go back to that part, so that's kind of how I see the guardrails, Michelle. Functioning a little bit in relationship to closing the achievement gap i- in those ways.
Yeah, along those lines, I want to make sure that we take credit for the work that we've already done. Because when I was reading through this, and, and Rita was very helpful, thank you for all the research you've done on it. But I kept thinking. In a lot of ways, we've already done some of this work, so we've established, you know, reading and math goals for our students. And as part of that, we've established the fact that no subgroup within the district. Will, will fall behind, right, that the data will be provided broken down. And that, and that the district is not to achieve that goal. With, with one group, but leave the other groups behind, and I don't have it in front of me to, I can't remember exactly how we came up with that. I, I believe that's a perfect example of a guardrail that we already have in place. We've also talked about, um, you know, the need for as we, as we do communication, right? And, you know, with the district that we intentionally. Um, go after groups that have been underrepresented or have not, you know, been consulted in the past and. You know, we reach out and, and that's something we, we've already sort of established as, as a value, and I appreciated the fact that you sort of. Called guardrails values, I, I will be frank with everybody, I hate. Strategic planning processes because there are a whole bunch of people who get paid a lot of money to write books where they just rename everything every couple of years. And they call it something different and it's a new way of doing, it's all the same process and. Your email was really helpful Rita in terms of laying out like, yeah, it's a vision. And it's values and it's, you know, and setting goals and a strategic plan and. And it's the same way as it's been for, for thirty years, right? And, and this is all that as well, I want to make sure, and kind of getting back to Amy's question, I, I don't have a. Problem with the value here, I just don't want to duplicate something that we've already done. Um, and for me, maybe some of it's just elevating these things that we've done, we can slap a guardrail name on it if we want to. Um, and then, and then sort of move forward, and there may be additional things we want to add in there, but I just, I want to make sure we're, we're, we're talking about the things that, that we already have done in this, in this area.
So let me, let me a- address that, um, do, do we need this? I guess my short answer is, I don't know. I, I'm not saying we absolutely positively have to have this. I, but I, I wanted to bring it forward, um, so that the board can think about it. And let me just mention one other thing that distinguishes guardrails from the goals. So, a- and, and this is. This is using the, the council model of governance and. I guess, you know, as you guys go forward, one of the things that you're going to have to figure out is whether you want to adhere. To the council model of governance and if so, how closely. But let me, you know, the, the way the model is set up. Um, the goals are supposed to be only student focused. So it's only about the students. And, and we're, and they should be around student outcomes, okay? The guardrails. On the other hand. Are. Are able to deal with adult behavior, adult related issues. So it's a way for the board to kind of set values. Or, or parameters, depending on how you want to frame it. Specifically around different kinds of adult behaviors. And the, the guardrails are supposed to be logically linked to the goals. So, um. There's, you're supposed to be able to um draw a line. Whether it's a, you know, a solid line or a dotted line. Um, between. The guardrails, the, the, whatever issue the guardrails are meant to address and. Their impact on achievement of the goals. Of the, the student outcome goals that you've set. So there's got to be sort of, it's got to be a logical link, even if it's not a um. You know, a direct. Like administrative link.
Rita, could I, could I interrupt just to put a more cynical spin on this? I, I think what it sounds like is council great city schools came out and said, all your goals should be student focused, period. And then they very quickly realized in all the large districts that that was not sufficient when it came to. Setting goals superintendent evaluations, and now they've sort of said, well, okay, your goals are student focused, which I actually fully support, they should be student focused. And now we're going to create something called guardrails that allow you to get back to some of those, those other measures. And I guess I just want to, want to remember, this is the exact process we went through. Where AJ came in and said, every single goal and your superintendent's evaluation should be student focused, that's it. And then not only the board, but Guadalupe realized pretty quickly, that's actually not. Sufficient because there are other things that we want to talk about that are really appropriate to talk about. And so again, I just, I feel as though we have already gone through a process where we added the adult focused things and we use the OSBA template, and we can use other templates as well. To get to the same place where. You know, council great city schools sort of recognizing their initial guidance really wasn't comprehensive. So that's my cynical take on what we've got going in front of us.
Okay, so I, I can't speak to how this developed, you know, before my time. Um, and. And I'm trying, I, I mean, I'm not. I'm. How do I put this? I'm not saying that we have to do this. I'm, to, to some degree, I'm conveying information that I've gotten. And. And some of the things that you're mentioning are things I have struggled with, like. What, why are you doing it that way? And I haven't yet decided. How much of an acolyte of the council governance model I want to be when I grow up. Um, so this is, you know, you're. I, I'm sort of struggling with this my own self. So I'm not here to say we absolutely have to do this because, you know. Ordained by God. What I'm saying is, this is what the model says, we've sort of bought into the council model. This is part of it. We should at least think about it, whether we want to do it. And, and even if we want to do it, even if we do want to come up with a list of guardrails. One or more of them may be ex- just extracting from some of the goal work that we did. You know, or not, or you could decide. Never mind redundant, not helpful, don't see the point.
And I, I see Scott's hand up, so I'm sorry to, but I, I guess I would start, I actually think it makes some sense. I think we've already done a lot of this, and I would go back to Michelle's comment. This is important work, it's important to talk about our values and, and operationalize those, maybe we just take the work we've already done. And we can start talking about guards and then decide if there's anything we want to add or change to that work to amplify it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, I, I think that would be fine. Uh, and we, but we can talk more, but there are, there are a couple of other features that I want to mention about guardrails, but Scott, go ahead.
Thanks. So I, um, I've come to con- conclusion that this is really important. Um, and I was thinking back my experience. Uh, with a local educational institute that I won't name, and this was years ago. Where they embraced the, the board is only going to do X. Um, and it was those, you know, brief number of goals and oversee the head of the institution. And that just opened things up, process. For some really unfortunate things to happen. Which ended up sabotaging the goals of the institute. But I, I think, um, the guardrails can be ways that. Uh, can do two things. Uh, one is to like set down some. Rules, guardrails, whatever, direction of those values around, in this case, it was collaborative working relationships. Uh, there were a whole lot of just top-down boom decisions that came that. That blew things up. But the second thing is communicating to the public. About some really important values. About how we do things.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, we've talked a lot. And, and Michelle in particular, but all of us have talked about. The makeup of our staff. And uh. I can see that as a guardrail, I can, I can see, you know. I, I liked what Ailey brought up around the arts. Because uh I've seen what happens when, whoa, arts isn't tested. So there's nothing to measure it by, so it doesn't matter. Which was a pretty awful result. I, I like collaboration, I like student engagement as uh, as a goal, so I think there's. There's any number of these. I, I would support. Uh, the next board going through a brainstorming process. Picking out a limited number. And it's not like the others aren't important, but it's, it's the ones that, that rise to the top. And I think that would be a really good discussion for that board to have. Both to engage with. Couple of new board members. To pull out those kind of values pieces, I think would be uh, be really great.
Ailey?
Um, I think Andrew really ha- set a beautiful path forward that we already have some of this embedded in our very work we've done. And could we begin by pulling out some of those, like? The disaggregated data and the equity, and in fact, not the, the, like focusing on um black and native student success and then. Pieces like arts and social emotional are also already embedded there, and, and would that be a pathway to get us? I, I really love the Philadelphia goal, guardrails, I love how positive they are and how they, they dovetail so nicely with their strategic plan, which is online and. Um, I, I think that that, 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 we're already doing the work like Andrew said, and how do we? We not create too many redundancies like Amy pointed out, but, but celebrate that work and really use it to, to even more staunchly stand behind our values. For the social, emotional, emotional. Um, and a pathway for all students, whether that be arts or CTE or college or what, what have you.
I, I love the idea of actually also um. Answering that question that Rita posed about, um, is council for great city schools the best model, or is there a better one? Um, I know, and I mean Oregon School Boards Association, you know, they're, they're in, they're in baby steps of their equity path, they're not known for being the most. You know racially diverse organization, you know, but they're trying, they're addressing um what they can with the leadership that, you know, that, that's there. And, and so I think that's a really good question, is there, is there another? Is there another, besides council of great city schools, I mean, maybe perhaps school board partners. Has, has, has guardrails or has some examples of guardrails that we could also um. Look at. Um, and Andrew, I also like the idea of not being redundant and just seeing what we've already got. The one, the, what I'm looking at right now on my screen is the Philly, um, it's slide. Eight, and it's guardrail four, and it's addressing racist practices. So it's not necessarily student focused, but it's, it says our students' potential will not be limited by practices. That perpetuate systemic racism and hinder student achievement. Underneath, nested underneath that idea. Could be different theories of action or different inputs that we can look at, such as hiring teachers of color. such as hiring teachers of color, teachers and administrators of color, or even no net loss of, you know, teachers and administrators of color as an example.
So I was, just really quickly, I was so excited to see that guardrail in the Philadelphia example, and then I was so disappointed to see that they don't define it or measure it. And yet they do define and measure their other guardrails. So I, I'm less enamored frankly with the Philadelphia stuff as I went through it, but we can talk through that. But like, like, this is where, again, I, I feel like, you know, they put this on, all the other guardrails they listed, they had all these very specific metrics and how they're going to measure them. This one, they don't. And, and there's one thing they refer to in terms of, I think, suspensions, right? High school suspensions. But, but they don't, they don't, all the others are, are smart goals, and this one is not. Maybe that's because it was really challenging, or I, I don't know. But I hope we don't make that same mistake, I think.
Right, well, I mean, if this is systemic, and if, if anybody knew how to dismantle systemic racism, you know, we wouldn't have the problems that we have today, you know? It is a big, it is a big piece to chew off. And, and I don't know that we, I don't know that we have anybody in, in leadership positions that actually knows how to do that, and maybe even people that aren't in leadership. What I do know is, the people that are most proximate to the problems have very good solutions many times.
So can I, can I just talk about the other feature of the guardrails? We haven't talked about much, it's the, the metrics attached to them, the, or Philadelphia calls them indicators. So the, the board establishes the value statement, the guardrail. The superintendent establishes the, the indicators, right? So the superintendent is, is going to talk about the how. You know, the, the board, the guardrail statement talks about the what, the, the indicators, the metrics talk about the how. And, and this is, this is where you have to keep in mind that everything's got to be aligned, you know, top to bottom. So the, the indicators for each of the guardrails is presumably going to be present within the strategic plan. And so how they tackle the guardrail, how they address the guardrail, it's got to be aligned with the, the larger coordinated system improvement efforts, right? And, and the, those indicators or goals attached to the guardrails, a lot of the terminology is a little fluid, I have to say. So anyway, I'm doing my best here to translate into English. So the, the goals under each guardrail are intended to be like one to three years with an annual refresh. So it's supposed to be evolving, and specifically designed to address some of the barriers to conforming with the guardrail, that, you know, root cause analysis and data analysis and all the rest of that has identified already. And then, and there's supposed to be this sort of iterative process where the, the district side takes action to conform with the guardrail, right? So, and yeah, they're supposed to be smart and all that. So it's, I think the, I mean, when I think about it, seems to me the principal advantages of having guardrails called out. It's a, it's a way for the board, and ultimately the district, to, to proclaim, these are the foundational values that we hold dear. And in our oversight of the district, we will ensure that these values are not violated, because that's what we're saying to the superintendent. So I think it's, I mean, to some degree, I'm going to say this, and I don't mean it as a demeaning thing. I think to some degree it's a PR exercise, like it's, it's a public pronouncement. And it's, it's something that the, the larger community can hold the board accountable for.
Hey Rita, I, I really like the way that you just framed that, and it's all starting to coalesce a little bit more for me. I, and I like where you ended up, because I think it's actually a, an accountability measure more than a PR exercise. And to me, I mean, I'll just say that what makes sense structurally in my mind is for us to go back to our board goals and to create more of like a preamble. Like the, because where we ended up at our board goals was pretty wonky and pretty data-driven and not, I mean, of course, our values are embedded in each of our board goals, but there isn't really much of a proclamation or a value statement around them. And so maybe instead of a separate, you know, guardrails or whatever, we revisit our board goals and we put more of a stake in the ground about how they represent our values. And if, maybe in that conversation, we might find something missing in our board goals, and then we have to revisit that process again. But that was starting to make a little bit more sense to me and have a little bit more utility.
Okay, Julia?
Thanks. So I was just thinking through this and like thinking about the indicators, how they're set by the superintendent. I'm thinking maybe this is the place, this is like the, the place where we're weighing in on the how. So through the board goals, we've described the what. And the guardrails are, as you're getting to the what, these are the important things about how you do it. And we're not going to, we're not going to be prescriptive, because that's not our job in like directing sort of the operations or the how. But there are some ways that, that I do think could fit into the, the how we do our work. You know, we, we operate, the, the work needs to be done in an anti-racist way or informed by student vote, voice. And to me, those, that's, that's different from, we want to see X percent gain in student growth for these groups. And I say, as long as they're high level and, and there's only a few of them, I, I think they, they have value. But if you try and get into being really prescriptive about the how, then we're obviously in the place and not in the wrong lane. So that's just my take about the value and what they may do.
Yeah. Ailey?
So I think, you know, we brought up, Andrew brought up the educators of color, and I know that that is something that we, we looked, we've used the OSBA guidelines, leadership guidelines for the superintendent's evaluation. And I'm wondering if, you know, as we put in the guardrails, that those could also dovetail with our evaluation, and we could move away from the OSBA one if we wanted to. But I know that, like, that was one of our values that we stated to the superintendent as part of his evaluation, is we want increased numbers of educators of color, staff of color. And so that, that, that all kind of, to me, fits in with, you know, our, our goals are kind of the basis. If we're using the Council of Great City Schools model, which again is not perfect, but if our goals are our basis for evaluating the superintendent, it would make sense that the guardrails then are part of that. And it's a way for us to shore up those values that, that we've expressed in other ways.
So the other thing to keep in mind is, under the council model, the guardrails are included as part of the superintendent evaluation. So, so it is a way to, the, the specific metrics used, I mean, the indicators used for that evaluation are chosen by the superintendent. But they have to be, you know, consonant with the, the value that the board has established. So, I was going to say something after Amy, at some point, it went right out of my head.
Why don't you let me say something?
Please.
And that is, and it's something that Michelle brought up earlier that I want to flesh out, which is, and, and actually, you started it off Rita by saying, is, is this the system that we want to use? So I want to say two things. One, one is the, the best available research that we know of at least, is that it is. A second thing is, we barely started using it. And while I'm all for a learning organization and seeing what else is out there, i- if we, if this board jumps from one thing to another thing to another thing, I think it would be more useful to stick with what we have and really let it play out, see it work, you know, fine tuning it as we go along. And this is one of those adjustments that we're talking about, as opposed to saying, well, we just started doing this thing, but this looks better over here. I want, I want to say that, not to do that, but I think, I think there's a balance there that we should pay attention to.
Michelle, did you want to? Did you ever hand up, Michelle?
I did, thank you. I was curious, so that's interesting, that kind of, is that called like initiative overload? Where you put in a, you do something to change, right? And, and then you don't let it play out?
The shiny thing, look at that over there, wow.
Without, without giving the time, without allowing the time to actually see the change that you're expecting. But it made me wonder, like, in terms of evaluation, are we using, what are we using to evaluate our successes? Are we just using state, you know, testing data? Or are we, are we using third-party evaluators? Are we, I mean, I know that part of this may be the secretary of, you know, the audit might be taking a look at, and we're following up on those things. But how will we know our change, the things that we're putting in place to change have been successful if we, if we do nothing? I mean, how long would we expect? I think I've asked this before, is it a three to five year?
We have specific goals that, with measures that we've laid out, and two of them are still works in progress. The, the eighth grade sort of capstone piece, the high school, the high school piece where we have certain measures like CTE completion, college credit, dual credit kind of participation. And again, broken out by race and gender and special education and all those groups. So even our goals are still a work in progress that we haven't fully refined yet. But I, you know, we're, we at least have that structure set up.
My question was more about the evaluation piece. How, how will know, like, who's doing the evaluation? Are we relying on just testing data?
Yeah. Well, I, you know, Russ reports to us, it's not just testing data, it's that participation. And we should be hopefully hearing, you know, getting an update on the middle school redesign, which will embrace that sort of broader capstone concept going forward.
So that, that's in-house, that's like an in-house evaluation. Do we, are we relying on in-house? I mean, do we, do we use a third-party evaluator to, to assess where we're at with this?
Well, I think, I think that's the function of the goals. That, and, and, you know, if we adopt guardrails, that would also be part of the evaluation process. But I think that's the function of the goals. And if we're not happy with the comprehensiveness of the goals, then that's something we can, you know, you guys can take another look at the goals. But I think that's really the function of it, to come up with goals that are, that get at what, you know, what out, what student, I mean, if we're going to keep with the model, it's student outcomes. So what student outcomes are we admitted to? And, and the, the goals and their metrics are intended to provide the ability to assess how we're doing. Andrew, you've, you've been.
Okay, yeah, I, I still, so we, we have a goal, and we want to measure the progress against the goals, but also like how close we've gotten to reaching the goal. And the question was about how will we know when we've reached the goal? And, and who's doing the evaluation?
Yeah, can I, Michelle, because your points were, and I'm actually seeing what Scott and you were saying is so, so complimentary, right? Scott's saying, let's not, let's not just jump to something new. But I, and, and I hear you, Michelle, saying from the very beginning and now, like, but how do we ensure that we're getting there? I, I'm going to, where did it go? I'm going to share my screen, if nobody minds. So, and I don't know for sure if this is, can folks see that? I don't know for sure if this is the final document or not, but superintendent's evaluation for this, this year. I just want to point out a few things. And remember, we, you know, we're still tracking all the data for our, our student goals, but, but because of the pandemic year, we're also putting more focus on these OSBA goals. When I look at these, right, I, I, I'm going to keep coming back to this theme, I see a lot of guardrails. So under visionary leadership, 1.4, right? If, if, if sort of leading with racial equity is, is one of our values, 1.4 says, you know, makes progress on PPS's racial equity and social justice strategy with a focus on professional development strategies in their S J framework. Well, we haven't, so it's here. What we haven't done is, is sort of operationalize this or put a performance measure around this in terms of, Michelle, I think your question you just asked, how do we know that we've achieved that? I'm going to show, sorry if you get seasick, I'm going to go down here to communications. You know, under communications, under 5.2, engages and effectively communicates with diverse families, community partners, and other constituencies to strengthen student learning. That's another guardrail, I think we've already established, but we haven't put data around this to know that we've achieved it. And then when I go down to, is it organizational management? Yeah, 6.1, under organizational management, implements equitable strategies, processes, and systems to recruit, hire, develop, and retain high-performing personnel. Oh wait, that wasn't the right, there's one in here around hiring diverse, you know, personnel in the district. And maybe it was in a different one of the leadership standards. But again, we've got the guardrail there, but without the data in terms of, of, of how do we establish it? So to me, I feel like we're really set up well to go through the evaluation process this year, which is starting very soon. And as part of that evaluation process, begin to identify, what are the guardrails that we want to focus on for next year? And then when our new board members join us and we finalize next year's evaluation, operationalize those, Michelle, which I think is, I think, if, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I think it was what you just said, how do we know we've achieved it? And, and, and then actually like, like define those guardrails a little bit more in, in detail in terms of, of, of how we measure those. Rita, am I wrong that that's kind of exactly the process that you've learned about? CGCS is laid out?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, I started off by saying there's sort of a cascade effect of, of fine tuning operationalization in order to get to the vision. So yes, and we've got goals and the way we, you know, we can pull out all of this stuff that's embedded in the evaluation instrument that we chose, but, but attach some metrics to them. And, and in the process, you're kind of highlighting that to the community. Like, this is what we say we're going to do, this is what we say we believe in. And now we're going to show you that we're actually, you know, living into our values. And this is how.
And the, and the process you laid out is that we as a board would, would highlight a few of these, right? Maybe we pick three, four, five, six of these guardrails. And then the superintendent would say, okay, let me develop some metrics around that. And come back, we'd measure it.
Yeah, and I, I love that the superintendent, it's really that the board establishes the what, and the superintendent, you know, it's in, in his wheelhouse to, to say the how or, or, or provide the indicators.
Andrew, could you send around, I'm sorry, because I don't have the current version. Could you send around to us just so we all have that, the link to that document?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm going to ask Roseanne to send her on the final evaluation document, because I, I can't remember if what I looked at was the final one or not, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
Andrew, just thanks, that really clarified. I was, you know, I was coming from one angle, Michelle from another. Andrew, just thanks. That really clarified. I was, you know, I was coming from one angle, Michelle from another. And I was, I was trying to, and then, and you, you pulled that together. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes. And this is a great example of, you know, something that we all heard from our parents and that's two heads are better than one. And that's the beauty of diversity is that we're all, um, we've got the same goal, but we're cutting at it from different perspectives and have different questions.
So, um, let me see if there was anything else I needed to. Um, I think we've kind of covered what I wanted to say. Um, so I guess at this point, um, I think what I'm hearing is, um, an expressed interest to, uh, to take a look at developing guardrails. Starting off with what we've already got embedded in our, our evaluation instrument and the goals and all the language around it. Um, seeing if we can pull out, uh, a relatively small number of value statements that, um, that would convey, um, you know, a sense of, uh, the, the board's prioritization of the, the foundational values that we want to, we want to embody as a district. Did, did I get that right? Like you're not dismissing this exercise out of hand. I, I still think there's a little skepticism, but I'm sensing that it's diminishing a little bit. Um, so is, do, do you think it's worth going through an exercise?
Yes.
Okay.
And it'd be really interesting to see because everyone, you know, has something valuable to contribute where the, where the skepticism is and if we can, you know, actually work to address it, like in service of improving ourselves, continual, and continuous improvement.
Wonder if.
That vision piece I think is really important, visioning, you know, um, we've got the vision, we, we need to figure out how to operationalize and how to make that a vision that we can all kind of gain consensus around.
I'm curious since Nathaniel hasn't said anything, um, whether you have a, a point of view on this, Nathaniel?
Yeah. So I'm, like many of you, struggling to see exactly what the point of guardrails would be. Um, I, I, I do understand they could have some, um, I just, I want to caution us against making, um, our, I guess, overarching goals more complicated than it needs to be and more opaque, I guess. Because if we've got different documents that are basically laying out what our goals are, it becomes all the more difficult for the public to actually understand what we're trying to do. Um, so I, 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 I don't know. I mean, I'm certainly all for looking into it more, but I think that we need to be mindful of that.
Ailey?
Rita, what were you thinking about for next steps? I mean, I, I think that, the idea of looking at and extrapolating guardrails from that, that, that excites me, but I'm not sure what you were thinking as far as our next.
Well, I think, um, I mean, I think Andrew's sort of hit on it. Um, we're about to embark on this superintendent evaluation. Um, so we're all going to be looking at this instrument and we're going to be, we're, we're going to be getting information from him. And then, um, each of us is going to go through the instrument and, you know, do our own evaluation. Um, I think as we go through it, each of us should sort of look at the instrument and see if there are pieces of it that we might want to extract and, um, and kind of elevate into guardrails. Um, I, I guess my one caution is that you don't want to have too many. Because it's like, you know, if you have, if you have eight goals, that means you're not actually gonna do much on any of them. Um, so it's, it's better to have a small, smaller number than, than bigger number. Um, but we can certainly start off with a long list and, and, you know, kind of winnow it down. And I, I would, I guess to, to try to make this more concrete, um, it might be, we're, we're not gonna have an enormous amount of time, uh, during the evaluation. Cause we're, we've cut it down to two sessions. Um, so it, you know, we're, we're not gonna be able to wax poetic, um, but it might be worth allocating, um, some time at the end of the evaluation process, you know, in that second session, um, where we can have a, a brief discussion of people's thoughts about any pieces that we might want to convert into guardrails.
I know that our, our executive sessions, that our evaluation things are executive sessions and the guardrails conversation might need to be a public meeting. So I think what might be better is to have a schedule, a work session after the evaluation session to pull those out and begin that process of, of thinking about guardrails. Um, that we would then take into the beginning of the next year. Does that, does that sound reasonable?
Um, okay, but, but I, I would, if we're gonna do it that way, which probably makes sense. Um, I would strongly recommend that you take good notes as you're going through the evaluation instrument.
I, yeah, it, that it should come, we can have a conversation at the end of the second executive session about guardrails, but then to, to actually make decisions or move forward, we need to do it in a work session.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, 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 totally. And, and, and I think, you know, if you remember how many, how many times we had conversations about the goals? And, and the goals could still use some work, I think. Um, I, this is not going to be a one and done sort of thing. Um, so yeah. But I think it's, um, I mean, COVID braided brain is a thing and I'm getting old. I don't know about the rest of you. Um, and it, it, but my ability to retain thoughts from one hour to the next is limited. So just as you're going through it and, you know, at, at your desk at home, um, because you're gonna be scoring and giving short comments for each of these sections. Um, I, I think that's where you want to start taking notes about ideas you might have about what can be converted into a government.
That's a really, that's an interesting point. So if we, if we work on the document in Google Docs, we will all be able to. We can't do that.
We can't, we can't, um, share the Google Doc because that's considered like in that way, because that's considered.
Okay.
I would be happy to be the quasi-guardrail guardian in the evaluation process and just really take notes with an eye toward, um, those subsequent conversations.
Okay. So that, I guess that the next, the next question about next steps is, um, are we, are, I don't remember the answer to this. Um, are we going to be having another retreat, um, in June? Okay.
Yeah. So I was gonna, when we were finished with this conversation, I was gonna kind of talk about the broader next steps. So I'll just do that now. So the plan is that we would have another retreat in June. And at that retreat in June, we would invite the, um, newly elected board members to join us. Um, and that we would go through our board self-evaluation, um, to kind of give them some insight into that tool. But also, you know, the new folks won't be able to evaluate because they won't have been here for, for this past year. So that we would do our board self-evaluation in June, which would give us the areas of things we might want to work on for the future. And then, if we had other things into that June retreat, um, we could. For now, the, the sole sort of agenda item is the board self-evaluation. Julia?
Thank you. And this I think fits, um, within that context is, um, I know we were focused on the guardrails, but I really want to make sure that we come back to the middle school, the eighth grade piece. Because I feel like one of the things we were waiting for, the staff said they were waiting for the hiring of the middle school director and we have that person in place. And I really feel, um, right now it's just based on the S BAC scores. And I think we all agreed that that wasn't what we felt would be representative. So I'd, I'd love for us to, before the school year gets started and we're off and running, that we go back to that. Cause I, I feel that's just a, a piece that's, uh, super important as we're, you know, sending kids off into, into high school that we've defined sort of what, what, what the goal is that we're aiming at.
Um, okay, is, is there anything else that we should talk about?
Rita, I just want to say thanks for doing this and for very capably leading this pretty complicated conversation. I think it's really important that we had it. And I think we have a good pathway to kind of keep winnowing in on these issues. But, um, you did a great job and appreciate the work.
Me too. You can tell there's a doctor in the house.
A somewhat confused doctor.
Doctor with a bad memory.
Well, that's.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
I really appreciate, I appreciate the, the time and attention you gave to this.
What are we gonna do without the doctor or the scripner?
Well, I may still send you emails about copy editing, just saying, but.
We could just send you stuff to edit.
I'm like throwing on the Oxford comma. Sorry, Michelle. What were you saying? I think we talked over each other.
I said, we can send Rita things just to edit to keep her out of trouble.
Oh, I don't know that that's possible to keep her out of trouble.
But, but it, what does it say about me that I actually enjoy copy editing? It's.
Lots of things.
And no comment.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we have a good path forward. We've, we've kind of come to consensus on the pieces that were before us today. Again, these are all just first steps. Our, you know, shifting board culture is gonna take all of us working together for a while to, um, undo some of the white supremacy that's innate in our system and also some of our bad habits. Um, that are not, they don't let rise to the level of that, but are all, maybe not, um, as healthy as they could be. So thank you everyone for your work on this. I feel like we've made great progress. Um, again, next steps, we'll take all of these materials that we sort of, um, worked on today to staff and especially to Liz for an overview to make sure we're not doing anything that causes problems. And then, um, we will, um, schedule our next retreat to do our self-evaluation. And that's where we are. And we, and we will vote on all those pieces at a board meeting in May so we can kind of formalize this process. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn?
Thank you, Ailey. And thank you again, Rita. And really good work today, everybody.
Yeah, go team. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good rest of your day.
Thanks.
Thank you.